Are we good back there? Oh, we're good back there. All right, apologies. I want to welcome everyone to the Agoura Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written public comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I'm now going to call this meeting into order, and I will defer to Commissioner Sharon for tonight's pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Thank you very much. I will now defer to, we have two city clerks tonight, but I'm going to defer to our city clerk, Michelle Hobbs, for the roll call for tonight.
Good evening, Commissioner Platzer.
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon.
Present.
Commissioner Stein.
Present.
Vice Chair Reinhardt. Chair Roth.
Here.
Chair Roth, you have a quorum with Vice Chair Reinhardt absent.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt has submitted a request for an excuse absence for tonight's planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to approve her request?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to accept Vice Chair Reinhardt's excused absence.
I second the motion, our Mayor Platzer, to excuse Jessica Reinhardt from this meeting.
Thank you very much, and I'll defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving along, I, we are going to move to the approval of tonight's agenda. Similarly, will someone please make a motion and a second to approve the agenda, and please state your names?
Commissioner Sharon moves to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Stein seconds.
Thank you very much. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you very much. I will now move to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on tonight's agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please do not approach the die. Hand your item to our city clerk, and she will distribute on your, on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and the speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to our city clerk.
Thank you, Chair Roth. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing that there's no public comments tonight, we'll move to our consent calendar approval. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to our city clerk. Do we have any public comments?
Chair Roth, we have no written public comments, and no speaker cards have been received.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from my fellow planning commissioners on tonight's consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the maker and second state your names, please?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Great, I'll now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing. I'm seeing Denise run back up here, so I'll give her a second. Great, awesome. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment to revise the table contents, table of contents and the safety element with the updated multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, the adopted evacuation plan, and an updated evacuation analysis. I will now open the hearing and defer to the community development director Denise Thomas for its staff presentation. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Denise Thomas. I'm the community development director here in the city of Agoura Hills. The item before you this evening is an item to discuss an amendment to the safety element of the general plan and the table of contents for the general plan. The discussion will be limited to amendments to that element and that element only. Thank you. We're going to have a conversation about the project description. I'll share the details of the project description with you. Then we'll dive into the background of the project so that we can give you some feedback on how we got here. We will discuss compliance with state law, and then we'll discuss next steps before I offer you a recommendation. So, the state law requires that if a amendment to a revision to a hazard mitigation plan is either adopted or revised, that we have to, state law requires us to go and amend our safety element to incorporate whatever documents we were using to make the amendments. The table of contents edits that you found in your staff report were to incorporate the evacuation analysis and the evacuation plan into the table of contents as appendix, appendices to the general plan. And then the safety element itself has amendments that update the information to the most current information, and it also references the most recently adopted version of the Las Virginas, of the Las Virginas Malibu Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan. That hazard mitigation plan is a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and it includes information for the cities of Hidden Hills, Malibu, Agoura Hills, Westlake Village, and Calabasas. As I indicated before, Government Code Section 65302.15 guides us on what our activities and our actions should be in the event that a local hazard mitigation plan is amended or adopted pursuant to the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act. The focus of this conversation, the focus of your deliberations, deliberations should be, A, whether or not the proposed amendments to the safety element in the table of contents are consistent with what I advised in the staff report, and B, whether or not there are five pieces of information included in the evacuation analysis. State law requires that the evacuation analysis identifies the evacuation locations, that it identifies the evacuation routes, capacity for those routes, determine the safety and viability of those routes, and it has to do it under a range of scenarios. On the screen before you is the city adopted evacuation plan. The evacuation plan was adopted initially by the city council in 2020, and it was updated in 2022. Additional approvals or recommendations from you are not, are not necessary for the evacuation plan because it has been adopted already and has been for over two years. And we use it when the evacuation, when the emergency operations center is active. In fact, we use this plan when the Kenneth Fire was, 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 when the EOC was activated to address the most recent fires, including the Kenneth Fire. We use this plan to help us with our evacuation route guidance. The evacuation plan identifies evacuation zones which are consistent with CAL OES, which is the California Department, the State of California Agency that is responsible for emergency services. It was also, the, in fact, the hazard mitigation plan was also reviewed and approved by FEMA in addition to CAL FIRE, CAL OES. The reason that we're here today is because we have adopted by reference the amended hazard mitigation plan, and now we need to just include it in the general plan itself. But the routes identified in the evacuation plan are on the screen, and what you can see is that there are, the routes that were determined as part of the evacuation plan were Reyes Adobe Road, eastbound and westbound to the 101, Canaan Road, southbound to the 101, Canaan Road, northbound to Linderow Canyon Road, and Reyes Adobe, eastbound or westbound to the US 101, and then Agora Road, eastbound to Liberty Canyon, and Liberty Canyon, northbound to the 101. And then Agora Road was identified as an alternative east-west connection with a detailed plan for the Old Agoura neighborhood. The image on the screen depicts the Old Agoura Emergency Traffic Control Plan. The Old Agoura neighborhood has been divided into five different districts, and those districts include evacuation routes designated by arrows, which will give you the direction that they are supposed to go to in the event of an emergency. So, the, the issue before you tonight is to take a look at the evacuation analysis and determine whether or not the five criteria identified in the state law on the screen can be found. And staff will walk you through what those, what those are and how the analysis complies with those, and then at the end will be available for any questions you may have. So, the evacuation analysis, next slide, please. The first task the evacuation analysis had to take on, oh, is it hard to see? Okay. So, the evacuation, the evacuation analysis, its first task was to identify what the evacuation location was going to be. And so essentially what they opted to, what the consultant did was it took population south of the city in the unincorporated LA County area. It took population within the city, including the build-out numbers for our general plan. So it presumed that every lot was developed to its potential and what that population, what that population's vehicles would be. It took into account the area north of the city and the unincorporated Ventura County area known as Oak Park, and it took 5,000 trips and brought those down through Canaan. It also looked at the housing element density, so all of the units that the city council approved with the adopted and certified housing element from 2022 was included in the analysis. And then it also took a look at all of the hotel rooms that we had. And it endeavored to model an evacuation with all of those people, early morning evacuation with all of those people in their homes, and that was seen to be the worst-case scenario. The evacuation routes that were, that are adopted in the evacuation plan were used as the basis for the evacuation analysis, except they did additional review. So, the evacuation plan identified 10, 10 routes. This plan identifies the evacuation plan routes, and it also takes a look at 23 different segments within those routes to determine whether or not those routes had capacity to address the evacuation needs of the population that was identified as part of the evacuation locations. The way that the exercise worked was that we took people from where they are, routed them to a safe gateway, which was seen to be the US 101, so that they can make it to, safely to the safe gateway, and then from there they'd be able to move on to their ultimate place of safety. So, what you're seeing on the screen represents the times with the times that the model demonstrated from the center point of the evacuation analysis to the safe harbors. The evacuation analysis also did other things that are, that I will go over with you a bit later in the presentation, but right now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Matt Stewart. He is the city's traffic engineer, and he will walk you through kind of the, the study and the methodology and the assumptions. And I'll be back with you after.
Thanks, Denise. So, to provide a little bit of an intro to this slide, this is, this travel time analysis is a supplemental analysis to what's required by state law. And this is not the time that entire neighborhoods would be able to evacuate, but rather it's, it's explaining how long someone in the middle of each residential zone would take to evacuate to the safe gateway. Modeling that full-time to evacuate for every resident is not required by the state law and was not included in this project. But this data does inform the capacity analysis that we'll see later on by identifying the neighborhoods that are farther from the safe gateways. So, before I present the capacity analysis, I wanted to go over four of the key assumptions and the methodology for the study. So, we modeled, as Denise mentioned, a range of scenarios, a fire from the north into the south. And what was chosen to be the worst-case scenario is when the evacuation is a mandatory order overnight while everyone's asleep and at home, because that signifies the largest number of people evacuating at one time. The, and, and, yeah, as Denise mentioned, includes people coming from the north from Oak Park in scenario one, and from the south in the Santa Monica Mountains for scenario two. So, the analysis does include the full 16,000 homes in Agoura Hills plus 5,000 or 2,000 from the other communities in those two scenarios. It does include the full build-out of the general plan with the housing element sites. And I do want to mention, we assume two vehicles per household, which is based on data from American Community Survey regarding the average number of vehicles per household. So, this slide shows the volume and capacity for each segment. As given there's nine zones and four safe gateways, many of the evacuation routes use several of these segments. And the way the study was done was by adding the volume incrementally as more residents would join that flow to the safe gateway, and at each subsequent segment tallying the total volume, and then on each segment also tallying the total capacity, which is based, based on the number of lanes multiplied by the amount of vehicles that can travel per hour. So, as you'll see, scenario one with the fire to the north of the city, scenario two with the fire to the south of the city are both shown. For scenario two, 21 of the 20, sorry, 22 of the 23 segments have volume to capacity ratios below one. And for scenario one, there are two additional segments where the V over C ratio exceeds one, and that's due to the community of Oak Park evacuating southbound on Canaan and adding 5,000 additional vehicles. For the three segments where there's a V over C ratio above one, the city is planning to implement, implementation measures to facilitate evacuation flow. So, want to reiterate, evacuations are always dynamic situations. Fires can start and spread in any number of ways. So, the city will use a mixture of these techniques depending on the, the scenario that's unfolding. But number one, a phased evacuation is certainly recommended where people either further from US 101 or closer would be asked to evacuate sooner than others, acknowledging that there is a large number of people that may need to evacuate on Canaan. And then secondly, counterflow is, is a strategy that's recommended both on Canaan and Reyes Adobe Road. When you implement counterflow, you do need to maintain a certain width of roadway for emergency personnel to go the opposite direction. So, and note, like, in every case, there would have to be at least 20 feet available for emergency personnel to travel in the opposite direction. And, and then thirdly, there, it's recommended that there be emergency personnel at key intersections to direct residents to a different route if necessary, depending on the evacuation conditions. And then lastly, I want to mention, the other, the state law also requires that streets with only a single point of egress be identified. So, this report does document where those streets are located, and so the city will use that information to inform those residents most urgently when an evacuation comes. That, and I'll pass it back to Denise to discuss the compliance with the state law.
Thank you. An evacuation analysis that comports with state law analyzes the capacity, the safety, and viability of evacuation routes under a range of scenarios. This part of the presentation provides information that demonstrates the evacuation analysis, the evacuation analysis compliance with state law. State law requires us to identify evacuation locations and evacuation routes. The analysis identifies the US 101 as the safe gateway, and from the safe gateway, vehicles continue their travels to their ultimate location of safety. Additionally, the city of Agoura Hills, the unincorporated area in the Santa Monica Mountains south of the city limits, and the unincorporated area in Ventura County north of the city limits known as Oak Park has been identified as the evacuation locations. This provision, this provision of state law has been met. The evacuation analysis analyzed wildfire because it has been determined by FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and by CAL FIRE, that the city of Agoura Hills is at risk of wildfires, and we have had historical wildfires in the past. As the traffic engineer discussed in their presentation, the evacuation plan did not account for every trip in Oak Park used, to use Canaan Road to evacuate to the US 101. However, the evacuation, evacuation analysis does move all of the trips, or 5,000 of the trips from Oak Park through Canaan Road and to the 101 for safe, towards safety, and it moves roughly 2,000 trips from the area south of our city border in unincorporated LA County through the intersection at Canaan and Agora Road. This was deemed to be the worst-case scenario by selecting a time when everyone would be at home and the hotels would be full of residents in their rooms. As mentioned previously, the evacuation analysis did model the early morning wildfire from the north and an early morning wildfire from the south, and it analyzed if the traffic could move at speed, at the posted speed limits on the roadways, and then it also modeled a reduced capacity so that it can model congestion. so that it can model congestion vehicles that would be going through at about five miles an hour. So the, this provision of the state law has been met. The evacuation analysis expands on the, expands on the evacuation routes identified in the evacuation plan. The evacuation analysis identified nine routes that lead vehicles to safe gateways with access to the US 101. The analysis also analyzed 23 segments of along the evacuation network in total to determine capacity. Capacity and the routes have been identified. So this provision of state law has been met. State law requires an analysis of capacity of the evacuation routes. The total capacity of all the lanes used for travel to evacuate during an emergency would be 66,690 vehicles per hour. The number of vehicles evacuating in scenario one from the north with Oak Park, 5,000 Oak Park trips going through Canaan was 21,463 vehicles. And as I said, it included 5,000 vehicles from Oak Park. The number of vehicles evacuating under scenario two is 17,931 vehicles, which includes 2,000 vehicles from unincorporated LA County, south of the city limits. The evacuation analysis demonstrated the adequate capacity to accommodate those that needed to be evacuated existed in our existing roadways without additional lanes. The vehicles will be conveyed to the safe gateway, which was identified as the US 101. And with that information, the provision of state, this provision of state law has been met. State law requires that evacuation routes be viable. A viable evacuation route is a route that has adequate capacity to accommodate the volume of vehicles being evacuated. And as mentioned in the previous slide, there is adequate capacity. There's a total of 66,700 vehicle capacity per hour and under scenario one and under scenario two, both of those scenarios could be accommodated within the existing roadway. Additionally, a volume versus capacity analysis was performed, which identifies which segments to implement additional mitigation measures for. Those would be the segments of, the three segments where the volume to capacity, the volume to capacity ratio equaled one to one. Anything above one to one would require additional implementation measures to kind of keep it at a one to one ratio. And there are implementation measures proposed in the evacuation analysis. This provision of state law has been met because it identified the viability of the existing evacuation routes. State law requires that evacuation routes be safe. All evacuation routes are barrier free with continuous paving and in most instances with roadway shoulders. Additionally, there is adequate capacity for vehicles evacuating along the network to reach the safe gateway. The analysis identifies implementation measures to use when needed to address overloaded roads such should the situation arise. With this information, staff determined that this provision of state law has been met. The city council is the final approval authority of this item. The planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the city council. And a public hearing will be held where the city council will consider the planning commission's recommendation, deliberate, and take action. This item is tentatively scheduled for the May 28, 2025 city council meeting. The city council staff respectfully recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment, a general plan amendment updating the table of contents to incorporate the evacuation analysis and the evacuation plan as appendices to the general plan and adopt the amendments to chapter five, community safety, which is our safety element, to clearly and explicitly identify the updated studies that have been approved by the COG, as well as make a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes my presentation. We are all available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. As we continue, I'll defer to my commissioners. If you have any questions of staff, I assume all of us do. So I'm just going to start. Commissioner Stein, would you like to? You'll defer?
I will defer. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharon, do you want to ask questions of staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I was taking notes and I have quite a few, so I'm warning you now. Okay, so I, can we put up? I'm going to just go in order of my notes. It'll be easier for me. Can we put up image one again that we had? Evacuation plan and Old Agora evacuation plan, were these disseminated during our January fires? I don't recall ever seeing this out to the public. Were, this was already in action? And, and so did, did the public know about this? I don't recall seeing this, so I'm just curious.
The Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. The evacuation plan was used. I was in the EOC when we activated it for the most recent set of fires. And I can attest to the fact that the Public Works Director worked with planning staff to try and surge traffic away from Canaan and Agora Road, so they were moving people around. It was actively used by staff during the emergency situation. And it's on our website and has been on our website for, I want to say, at least, the updated version, at least a year and a half. And our social media team, we had five people sending out social media news post blasts during the activation of the EOC. And they were sending out information about how to evacuate, what zone you're in. And so it was actively used during that.
Okay, was, I guess, I'm curious because I didn't see this physical map. And I live in Old Agora, so I didn't see the Old Agora route map as well. I was, so I was just curious about that. That was a, that was like, in terms of the communication and disseminating information, I was, you know, stuck to my phone, Agora Communications, like Twitter, all that stuff. So I didn't see this. It may have been put out. I may have missed it. I was just curious. And then in terms of the scenarios, how, how was it determined that the scenarios that were ran were the worst case scenarios? Were there any fire professionals that were consulted on the model?
I'll defer that question to the consultant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Matt Stewart, City Traffic Engineer here. The, in terms of the types of natural disasters, the study referred to FEMA and CAL FIRE for data on previous disasters that have affected the area. And fire was determined to be the most significant type of disaster. And based on the locations where they've ignited and spread in the past, that's how the decision was made to model a fire from the north and from the south.
Understood. But was there any point in time where you said, you know, captain of forestry fire, what would you determine as the worst case scenario for our community? Like potentially? Because this is all a model, right?
I'll let Denise respond to that.
So, no, we didn't give them, that's not what, that's not what CAL FIRE does. We wouldn't be able to give CAL FIRE our individual analysis and say, hey, can you tell us, is this the worst case for our square, our four square miles? But what they did is they told us, based on a risk index, FEMA's risk index, you need to model wildfire. And what we did was we emptied out everyone in our city and everyone around our city that evacuated through our city during, during the Woolsey Fire, because we have sanitized cell phone data. So we knew which areas to include because they would be the ones that would likely use the city. Then we overestimated that. So the reason that it is the worst case scenario is because there are no more units you could add to move through the city. And we put them all on our roadway to make sure that we had adequate capacity.
I got that. I really, I, I really got that the scenario you guys ran was a scenario where everyone had to evacuate at the exact same time. I'm just curious if that is the worst case scenario or not. I, I, you know, my brother, I asked my brother his opinion. He's 10 years in the forestry fire department, national forestry firefighter. And he grew up in Agora. So I asked him, what do you think the worst case scenario would be? And this was not the scenario he ran. He actually said this would be the best case scenario. And so I'm curious, you know, how we determine that? Because I can, I can tell you as a parent of three young children, if there's a worst case scenario, it's my kids at home, me in Old Agora in like a high fire risk zone, having to go and get my kids deeper into the city and then backtrack against this bottleneck effect that we, you know, potentially see. And then getting to my house, getting my pets, getting my stuff, whatever it is, or just even just leaving. So like, that's what I personally determine as being a worst case scenario. I also, you know, drive these streets every day. I see people waiting for the bus at Canaan and TO. People who come into the city on public transportation and have no way of getting out because they don't own vehicles. So there's a lot of scenarios. I know we can play like what if, what if, what if all day long. But I'm, you know, I, I'm curious if there's any sort of fire experts that consult now, maybe not CAL FIRE, maybe not actively, you know, employed people of the, of the state or something like that. But I wonder if there's someone else that we can get an actual opinion from in terms of like worst case scenario. So that's, that's my biggest concern about the model. Okay. Was the analysis done before or after the January fires?
The analysis was initiated in November 2024.
Okay. And was there any interest in taking what we learned from the Palisades and Pasadena, Altadena, and, you know, making an amendment or, you know, I don't know what it takes or what time it take, the cost and the time that goes into a report like this. So would there have been, you know, it's May now. Is there, would there have been time to take the data and the things that we learned from those incidences and apply them to our city or take that data and do something with it?
The information that we learned from, so the analysis, the analysis is a technical review. There are a finite number of homes, people in the city that you would run with minor changes for who's in town. So if it is performed, say at noon, so you will get the people who are inside the city, but you won't get the people who live in the city. So in order to get the big, cast the biggest net and put the most people into our, onto our roadway, you would do it when your population could be the highest. And so that's why the 2:00 AM, the 2:00 AM time or 5:00 AM time was chosen because a lot of the residents in the city of Agora Hill work outside the home and they wouldn't be home. And so it could be argued that that's not a good analysis because most of the people aren't here. I don't doubt that there are numerous scenarios that people would deem to be the worst case scenario. The state doesn't require us to identify the worst case scenario. What the state requires us to identify is a representative disaster that could be modeled because there are an infinite set of data sets and you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to model them all. What we learned from the Palisades, those, there are different strategies and techniques that you can use to address issues like power outages, to address issues like multiple fires going on at one time and not having enough personnel to come and serve you. Those are lessons that we did learn from the Palisades. And those are qualitative, qualitative measures that if you look at the, the implementation measures, it talks about counterflow so that we can increase our capacity if we need to get people out faster. It speaks to using all of the red light technology and all of the other technologies so that we can communicate and get people out. It speaks to phased evacuations where we move people out sooner rather than later. And those things wouldn't change. You would need to rerun the model in order to take advantage of those mitigations. So if there is, we have endeavored to put all of those qualitative measures into the evacuation plan as implementation measures. If there is an implementation measure that you do not see in the, in the evacuation plan or in the evacuation analysis that you believe would be useful, where we can always include that for the city council to consider. But we did take a look at kind of what we know, how we experienced moving everybody through the city during the fires, during the Kenneth Fire most recently, when all of those issues were at hand. We didn't have lights. We didn't have fire protection. We didn't necessarily have police to help us. And once the command was changed from LA County to Ventura County, they were able to get a handle on it very quickly. And so what we learned from that is that there are lots of different ways to make sure you're communicating with all of the other agencies and the people who are responsible for making decisions and making sure that you're in the loop. And I think that our city manager, who runs our EOC, and the assistant city manager, who runs our communication function, were very, 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 very good at responding, at responding and being nimble. That being said, again, the EOC policies and the evacuation plan policies can be amended. The evacuation plan can, the city council, if they believe they need to add other measures, they could amend it or we could just include it in the EOC. But it's not a technical issue that would require the model to be run a second time.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, so speaking of the Kenneth Fire. So, well, actually, first before that, can you define viability again for me? Just to make sure I'm accurately.
In this context, viability is determined by whether or not the routes have adequate capacity and whether or not they are safe. And so our roads are, almost all of the roads in the evacuation and evacuation route network are paved. And most of them have curb and gutter. There are a lot of lanes, so there's adequate capacity. There is enough capacity to evacuate the model, both scenarios, without counterflow in almost all instances. And in the instances where the capacity, the volume exceeds the capacity, there is adequate lanes that can be used to surge, to counterflow and run those lanes also toward the safe gateways. Additionally, the plan calls for redirect, redirecting flows when necessary. What we did during Kenneth was the Public Works Director, and she's here, and if you want to ask her questions, you can. What she and members of the Community Development Department were doing, where they were looking for alternative routes to try and relocate people and surge people out of harm's way or away from the impacted roadways, using alternative roadways. So that's the benefit of the evacuation plan. And we were able, we were able to do that. And the Emergency Operations Center is in the community room in between this building and City Hall. So during the Kenneth Fire, we were able to see that the traffic in front of Agora Road was moving very slowly, but it was moving and we didn't have lights. But there were staff out there directing people. There were barriers and barricades. And so I say all of this to say that no one fire is going to be the same as the very next fire. The key is to have a suite of tools and a suite of procedures available to you so that you can surge and use what is necessary to try and address the situation at hand. And I think that we've demonstrated that the evacuation analysis provides the, the technical information for us to understand what, where your tight spots are. And the evacuation plan itself identifies where the evacuation routes are also and breaks the city into regions. And so the tools are there now.
Okay, thank you. So I'm still going to ask these questions. I understand those answers. So a few things. One, I just want to mention this because I think it has a lot to do with the Kenneth Fire, which you brought up. So I live on Lewis and I did not know. not know before the Kenneth Fire that the barricades opened, and that's part of our evacuation route during a crisis. So going back to that, like, the dissemination of the old Agora map specifically, because that applied to me, I did not know that that was an evacuation route. So I would love to see, just on a side note, those type of things be more, like, disseminated. I don't know what the protocol is. I don't know who you need to, like, give that, hand that note off to, but I'd like to just mention that. And then, and then I found that in the Kenneth Fire, so we had evacuated to, so, oh, gee, what's that? So we evacuated to near Lindero Middle School, and when we, during the Kenneth Fire, we got that notification that the county all got, like, evacuate immediately, like, it caused everyone to evacuate. And we were stuck on Reyes Adobe, not moving for almost an hour. But my que, my, my question is, we, well, we found that we were stuck in a, in a line for people trying to get into the gas station at Reyes Adobe in Canwood. And so is there any plan of, like, how would we block that off, so it's, so it, the flow continues, so that there's no, like, like, had, I didn't know we were stuck in traffic for gas until I got into, into visual, like, I could actually see it. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that we can have a, like, you know, those teams, or some sort of system that we put into the evacuation plan, where those, like, commercial things are not, you're not allowed to, like, pull in and, like, bottleneck the roads, essentially. So that's a big concern of mine, because that was physically, we were stuck, and, and real-life scenario.
The evacuation plan does speak to when the barriers go up. Internal staff, the evacuation, the Emergency Operations Center protocols, every staff member has a different role to play when the, when the EOC is activated. The Public Works Director manages the flow of traffic and the roadway networks. She's here. Is it possible for us to send teams of people to investigate backlogs of traffic and make sure people are moving? Yes. Does that need to be explicitly listed in the, in the evacuation plan? It already is. It says that the barricades go up. That's the responsibility of the Public Works Director. We can't commit to being in all places at all times, because that's just not possible. We're a small city with a small staff. So in those instances, if there, when there are issues, we have staff that are out riding around during the, during the investigations. But as you may recall, the Kenneth Fire came at the same time that two of the other fires had shifted direction. And so we were still trying to, to manage it. Once the incident commander, who is in Los Angeles County, switched command from the Kenneth Fire, of the Kenneth Fire, from LA to Ventura County, the fire was contained, and it was put out within, it was put out remarkably fast.
Yes.
We got word that it was, that it was contained, and you didn't have to evacuate seriously within five minutes. We got the call.
Yeah.
So there is improvement that can be made in how we implement the strategies in the plan. We are always, there'll probably be some, Nate will probably, our city manager will probably take a look at the, how that, where that went, and identify things that we can do better or worse. But those, the plan already accounts for that. It was just, it was execution. And maybe we didn't know that the people were in line to get gas. So it's already in the plan, and we use the plan, so you don't have to amend the plan for that in particular.
Okay, perfect. So you just said that, this is a follow-up question based on what you said. You said that the city man, the, the traffic, you said the city manager and the city staff are the ones that, like, manage, who did you say that manages traffic flow? The, what's the position?
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director. So in this scenario, it's 5:00 AM. Where does, is the Public Works Department, Director a local resident? Are they, like, how do they run the operation?
When the EOC is activated, we all receive text messages to let us know, you need to come to City Hall. We work two different 12-hour shifts. Half of us are on, and we all have a role to play, regardless of what time it is, and you're there for 12 hours. And then you go home, and then the next, the next group comes. What our city manager did in advance of the Kenneth Fire and all, and everything that was going on, is he did a soft opening of our EOC, and staff was put on notice that you should not go home.
Okay.
And if you're not on the team that was supposed to be there, the team that wasn't on was released, so that they can go and be ready to come and relieve us. So it isn't the morning of the event. We track wind conditions. We track other incidents in other areas, and our EOC staff is very good at divining when we need to be here. In addition to that, our city manager is one of the people that's notified, and that's in the, that's in the evacuation plan. He's one of the people that receives notification if a, if an emergency is occurring anywhere in the vicinity in LA County. He gets notifications in, in advance, and then he makes sure that our council is aware of the emergencies.
Got it.
So I can't tell you that if someone doesn't start a flash fire in the middle of Agora Hills at 3:00 in the morning, that you're going to have a group of people in the city ready to deal with it. You will have a fire department.
Yeah.
And the fire department is here, and they can deal with it.
Yeah.
And as soon as the fire department is called, staff is called.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. During the presentation, I didn't understand something, so I'd love to have some clarification. It says, you started the presentation with saying it does not show all res, does not, the model does not show all residents would be evacuated, but rather a person evacuating from the center of each community. Can you elaborate? I didn't understand that. You kind of said it fast and then went into the presentation, so I, I'd love to just know what that meant.
Yeah. I was clarifying that table about travel time and distance. It's, it's not a modeling exercise. Like, there was, it's based on just the distance between residential areas and the safe gateways. And such a modeling exercise is not required by the state when updating the safety element, and therefore was not included in this analysis. So this, it, it's, it's, like, it informs the capacity analysis by telling, like, how far each zone would be from a safe gateway. So this time estimate would be for someone in the middle of each zone to travel in one column at the speed limit. Say they're the first person to evacuate. It's the middle of the night. There's no one on the road. Versus, as it gets more congested, it would take closer to those times in that second column.
Okay. So just to understand, I live in, I don't live in the center of old Agora, but I live in old Agora. You're saying if I got in my car, if I was in the center, and drove at the speed limit, it would take me, you know, whatever, where, I don't know where old Agora is on there, but, so it would take me two, two minutes and 16 seconds? And then you're saying, if I got in my car and drove 5 miles per hour the whole time to my gateway, my safety gateway, it would take me 11 minutes and 48 seconds? Is that just, just understanding? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Got it. And then, count, uh, counter, uh, wait, hold on. Oh, so in terms of the capacity, so you guys took, like, our full capacity of potential residents at a given moment, and then you twoxed it by the national average of cars. Is there any way to get, like, DMV data of how many registered vehicles we have in the city to run the model with? Or, I don't, I don't know if that's available information, but would that be a more accurate, like, it might, yeah, it might be the exact same number at the end of the day, but would that, would that be a more accurate way of getting a vehicle count, capacity count?
The American Community Survey is the accepted source of data for, like, similar traffic studies. Like, certainly, the most extreme you could count, you could go door-to-door and count.
Of course.
But it's an industry-accepted methodology to take an average. And of course, many houses have fewer, like, some, some houses share a car. Most common is to have two cars. Some houses may, will have more than two, but two is a, is a reasonable average.
Okay. And then, counterflows. When I was reading the report, you guys said that counterflows are a great way of expanding capacity, but that residents need to be trained. Is there, do we have a plan on training them? If it's, like, if it's in the analysis, I just want to make, I want, I'm curious about that.
The use of counterflow is going to be, if the city council approves the evacuation analysis, and we update the evacuation analysis with counterflow as an, as an, an implementation measure, it's after that that you begin the training. It's after that that you, you advise the staff. If you advise, if you advise the community about counterflow, but it's not in your plan.
There's no need.
Then there's no need to do it.
Yeah. Okay. Was the 66,000-vehicle capacity determined with the counterflows at the exact first moment of the, the scenario? Because, you know, in reality, counterflow's not going to come at the exact moment everyone needs to evacuate. It's going to come 15, 10, 20, half an hour later. So just curious.
The 66,000, the 66,690-vehicle-per-hour number is based on the number of lanes. The lanes won't change regardless of, regardless. So there are-
With counterflows?
It, it is including counterflow.
Okay.
What it's including is the number of lanes. So if there's a three-lane road, there's a capacity for that three-lane road per hour to move people along, you add all of the lanes up that we have, which is in the evacuation analysis.
Yeah.
And you figure out how many lanes you have, multiplied by what the volumes are based on the design, and that'll give you 66,690. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that you would be, you wouldn't add additional trips to that for counterflow. That 66 is everything available to move all of the cars.
Okay.
So if you're only moving 21,000 cars, you don't need all 66,690 vehicles an hour in lanes. You would use what you need, and then if you needed counterflow, then you would add additional lanes and additional capacity.
Okay. And then, in order to get that 66,000 counterflow, uh, uh, capacity number, 66,690 number, I think I understood when I read it, but I want to just make sure I understand it. Did, like, if I have to take three different roadways to get to the freeway, does that mean that my vehicle is counting three times in that 66,000?
Yes. It overcounts the trips. So if you take three trips, it may only be one vehicle, but we're counting it three times to make sure there's capacity available for you wherever you go. So whichever leg you take.
And when you say three trips, I am going from Vons, well, no, that's, that's one road. But like, if I'm going on three different roads, that's three trips in your, in your verbiage?
Yes.
Okay.
So one person, we didn't strip them away and say, well, it's one car, and we're going to follow that one car and count it as one. We didn't do it that way.
Okay.
The way we did it was, if that vehicle, there's room for that vehicle on Canaan, there's room for that vehicle on TO, there's room for that vehicle on Reyes Adobe, if need be. And all of those trips were counted as if they were brand-new trips, because we felt that that was the most conservative way to make sure everybody's trip would be accounted for.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I have more questions, but I feel like I'm hogging the mic. So if other people wanted to ask questions, I can reorganize myself and, and come back to me, please.
Commissioner Stein, Commissioner Plitzer?
I'll defer until other people speak, and then I'll speak at the end.
Commissioner Plitzer?
I agree. I'm going to defer.
I, I'll jump in then. First, I want to thank staff for the presentation. It was very thorough, and obviously, you're already doing a fantastic job of answering Commissioner Sharon's question, so I really do appreciate that, because, one, I do think there's a lot of detail here that can be very confusing to understand in a short amount of time. So I think you're doing a great job. So I want to start there. My, my first question is, Commissioner Sharon actually has asked a number of them, so I've got to organize myself. I wasn't expecting to ask quite yet. I, I guess going back to one of the questions that Commissioner Sharon was asking, right, in terms of, like, say we model a different scenario, right? I, I know the 5 o'clock scenario assumes the most amount of residents. The hotels are at capacity, et cetera. Assume it's 10:30 in the morning, right? A number of residents do, I think, I work in the city, I work at home, you know, I know your family, right? We do work here. Our kids are in the schools everywhere. We have a number of elementary schools along Canaan. We have a, one middle school up in Oak Park. There's a high school in Oak Park. There's another high school here in Agora, off of Canaan. What would it look like where you have the worst-case scenario, where you have all the schools at capacity with the school district in Oak Park, where you have a significant portion of people who come from out of the school district into this school district, trying to retrieve their children, while also the residents and businesses are all trying to evacuate? And I think, as a secondary kind of component to that question is, I don't necessarily care as much about that answer to that question, but what would fundamentally change in the evacuation plan? Right? Because the way I see it, the roads are built the way the roads are built. There's, you know, we can't go through the city with a magic wand and redesign the entire city for a perfect, possible worst-case scenario to be able to evacuate everyone at precisely whatever worst-case time it would be. But my question is, like, what fundamentally changes in those five key criteria that we have to satisfy, satisfy for the state, if we were to model another situation that we would be more comfortable thinking is the worst-case scenario? Thank you.
For the purposes of this exercise, nothing would change. The state law requires us to model a range of scenarios. State law requires us to identify evacuation routes. State law requires us to determine whether or not the routes are safe and viable, and state law requires us to look to see what the evacuation locations are. If you change the scenario, it would be the difference between, it could be the difference just between this scenario and that scenario. If you find, maybe the, you could end up where you're at a one-to-one capacity, and you can move everybody through the city without having to use counterflow. You could end up finding that different segments require you to use counterflow. What the analysis seeks to do is to analyze the situations and to provide a suite of tools that you can use, so that you don't find yourself in an issue. If the roadways become over, overburdened in certain areas, you would just move, you would just do your best to try and have everyone use alternate routes, or you would use counterflow to accommodate the additional capacity. And that's what the exercise is. So you could, the council could decide to run another, to run another model, but for the purposes of compliance with state law, the evacuation analysis doesn't require you to, by consensus or any other way, determine what the worst-case scenario is. It's accepted that you use CAL OES's information, which is Wildfire for us. It's acceptable that you use Wildfire according to FEMA, who are the preeminent disaster management, emergency management agencies in, in the country. And so that is acceptable. The difference is, you would just end up with a different data set.
And I appreciate that. And it, it's helpful for me to understand that, because I, I do think there's a range of scenarios. I think we are all still going through and analyzing and understanding what happened just down the road from us, multiple times, by the way. There were three fires in the city in Malibu in just a very short period. And so I appreciate that. If an additional model were, by direction of the city council, asked of, of staff to analyze, and that model came back and said, you, you're going, it would exceed that 66,000 threshold that's already been identified, what changes then? If anything. Your answer might be, nothing changes still, because we still have a limited road network.
The road, yeah. The, the, what it would inform, it would inform us that we would need to do earlier evacuations. We would have to have more voluntary evacuations. So if you ran a scenario where you exceeded the 66,000, 66,700 capacity, you would identify where you're overcapacity, and you would determine which groups leave earlier, so that you could pull some of those trips off the roadway network.
Got it.
It wouldn't stop any, it wouldn't stop us from still making sure everyone was safe. It's just people would have to leave earlier.
Appreciate that, which admittedly might be difficult, considering the circumstances. One other question.
May I, may I add a little bit here?
Yes, please, actually. Sorry, I was looking around for you, Matt, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Over here. So I just want to add, like, when we initiated the-
So I just want to add, like, when we initiated the analysis, we did evaluate different times of day that would be most beneficial to study, and this period was found to be the worst-case. Evacuations are rarely ordered all at once citywide. It's much more common for there to be a voluntary and then mandatory evacuation, and always, and very often, there's a phased evacuation, too. So this truly, it's, it's a worst-case scenario. And then, secondly, the, just the population of the city, it, it's higher at nighttime compared to during the daytime. Like, it is acknowledged people split up, like, with kids at school, but, so, that's why the nighttime was studied, because that's when the most people are in, in the city.
I appreciate that. I may not fully agree without, you know, a comparative model of that daytime, especially considering Oak Park during the day. But, but I, I trust the experts on this, so I appreciate that. A few more questions. Phased approach, as you just mentioned, was brought up, and as a possible mitigation to make sure that we can get more trips out before everyone would be required to leave. Who is, I think, Matt, you bring a great point, right? Like, the communication of that earlier phase, like, what we all experienced was, and I, and I know it's not an indictment on the city, I think there are, you know, like, a lot of fires going on all at once, and I think the county has recognized that there were some errors, and, and messages that were sent out in error. But I think who manages the communications is very important. I do think we have a very, we, we have a, we have a, you know, pretty old population, actually, in the city of Agora Hills, I think you're all aware of that, and, and so I'm not sure if social media is actually the best way to navigate that. For instance, when my family was packing our car for the Kenneth Fire, my across-the-street neighbor was actually at home in hospice, and I don't know, you know, basically any circumstance that she would have been able to leave her home, and I don't know how they were being communicated to at all. And so my question is like, who manages the communications? Like, social media, I think, has its shortfalls, particularly with an aging demographic in our city, and I'm just very curious to know, like, what does that look like? And I know that doesn't necessarily get to the matter at hand in terms of what we have to approve tonight, but I think it's just like a general concern, as a planning commissioner with public here, just want to hear some feedback on that.
So, we have a Code Red system where residents are encouraged on a regular basis to sign up, which means that you'll receive a robo-call or a text call from the Emergency Operations Center telling you that you need to leave. There are, the LA County sends out information about evacuations, know your zone, there's a big push by the city council so that everyone knows their zone, so that when you see that Zone AH342, or whatever it may be, is leaving, you know that that means you. Our EOC actually had, for, for the elderly population living in the senior care facilities, we actually have a staff person on duty at the EOC who's responsible for using Dial-A-Ride to try and make sure that people are being evacuated, and we knew, my role at the EOC is intel, and so it's my responsibility to make sure that all pieces of information that come into the city are put in a, in a central location, and I notify everybody else in the EOC with me. So as we were getting reports, this place has been evacuated, we got all of the elderly people somewhere else, these animals have been evacuated, and so there is, all of the emergency services personnel communicates. We also have somebody embedded from the city that's embedded with the incident commander, or having regular conversations and meetings with the incident commander, sharing information with the EOC, making sure that everybody is safe. Would we know about, one, would we know about your neighbor in hospice across the street? Perhaps not. So I can't commit to, to saying that we will go door-to-door knocking on everyone's door to make sure that they're out, but we are doing, we have numerous redundant ways of reaching out to people, as easy as just going onto our website and signing up for Code Red so that you can receive a text message. And then there are emergency messages that go out from the emergency broadcast system, which hits all phones. But if your phone doesn't have data, you might, you might not get it. So what I would encourage people to do, if you know of, of a neighbor, or a friend, or a resident, and you know that they are isolated and may not have access to the information, let us know, call us, so that we, we can find out about them, and we can start, we can start finding a way to reach out to them. If we have a list of them, then we can, at least we know about them, and we want to know. We don't want anyone to be left at home without resources, scared, and caught in a fire. That's not what anyone wants, including us. And so if you know of people, let us know, and we'll start looking for a way to address those people in that population.
I, I appreciate that, yeah, and I would assume, I would never assume otherwise in terms of what the, what your wishes are for the, the population here. On communications, I have two more final thoughts, and then I have some other questions, and I apologize now that I'm hogging the, the mic, but what is the communication to, say, the residents of Oak Park, right? I, I know Ventura County unincorporated, but they're effectively our neighbors, they may as well, right, if that imaginary county line wasn't there, it would be an extension of the city of Agora Hills. What does communication look like with them with regard to the very same, you know, knowing which zones, knowing the phased approach, and all that sort of stuff? Because presumably, if a worst-case scenario happens, it's going to come from Oak Park, or it's going to come from, from the Santa Monicas this way, right? So I, I think the more likely of the two is probably, given how the winds flow during red flag events in Santa Ana, it comes from, from Oak Park, so I, I think, feel like it's, it's more likely there. So just want to understand what the communication looks like with our neighbors up to, to the north there.
During the adoption process for the, the general plan update, the, the people in Oak Park expressed concerns about the evacuation on Canaan Road. And they are able to sign up for Code Red also, they can sign up for alerts also, they can receive the same alerts that, they can receive alerts from the city if they sign up for alerts from the city. But I know that they are our neighbor, and I know that they would basically be in the city of Agora Hills, but they're not. And they're not even in the same county that we're in, they're in the county of Ventura. And so it, it behooves Ventura to make sure that if they have advanced information, that they're also sharing it with it, so, with them, so that the residents get information from Ventura County and from LA County. I can't speak to what Ventura County's notification system is, but I do know that Code Red works. Whenever there's an earthquake, we get Code Red alerts on our phone. Whenever there's, there are fires, whether they're here or not, we get Code Red alerts. If we, if people are missing, silver alerts, we get Code Red alerts. So they work, so I would encourage everyone to sign up.
Excuse me, if I can chime in real quick. With respect to Ventura County, Ventura County has their own version of Code Red, it's called, I think it's called Ventura County Alert, and so they have a very similar system where Oak Park, the community of Oak Park that's unincorporated would be part of that system. So they do, I know LA County Fire does encourage their residents in that area to sign up. You also have the ability, as Director Thomas mentioned, that there is the, the pause system where basically mobile towers are pinged, that's kind of when you see that, that notification that hits everyone. So there are ways for, for that community to be notified as well, not necessarily from us.
Appreciate that. My second, and you brought up a scenario that I think we should consider that was not planned for in earthquakes, and I'll talk about that in one second. But in terms of communication, we have an incredible, you know, our, our Public Recs events, phenomenal, would love to see a better effort, particularly this year, post-fires. I just got that lovely handbook in, in the mail with all of the events, concerts and everything that are happening, so to the extent that, and I'm sure it's already being done, and I admittedly haven't, you know, taken it upon myself to, to visit and like, scope out the, the tabling that's happening and see that, you know, these resources might be available, but any extent where we can, you know, we, the city's out in a public face, right? It could be the creek cleanup, it could be a concert in the park, that we're educating people, particularly in certain communities that felt like they weren't educated. I think that would be a great move for the city, and I would love to see that.
We can include that as part of the recommendation. So when we move forward to city council, just so you're aware, the city council recommendation, or the city council staff report will include a section of the report that, that discusses the feedback that you gave as, as a board. And we'll make sure that we include that public information in there, and I'll make sure that our communications manager, Mary Haddad, is aware of it. I'm, I thought that as part of the home hardening, they were, we are in the process of preparing a bunch of public information, assets that we can share, but I am not intimately involved with the communication strategies that we have. You may recall that roughly two months ago, at the beginning of the year, communications manager Haddad did a presentation to the city council in general that talked about crisis communication and the crisis communication plan. So there is a crisis communication plan, and I will see what I can find out about what, how they're getting that information out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm less concerned about the, the crisis as it's happening, and more, right, like, you know, baseline assumption, say 50% of the city is currently aware of how to get out of the city if the worst-case scenario happened, if we could get that up higher, I think that improves. And that, in those educational opportunities, I think, are year-round, and you guys do such a great job, and I, I have no doubt that we, we can, we can do that. Let me make sure before I go to the scenario that wasn't included. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll wait if I have any other questions. On earthquakes, we've had a few in the Santa Monica Mountains. LA Times article written, written pretty recently, that the capacity for the fault that runs right through the Santa Monica Mountains is an 8.0. I have a few questions regarding that. I mean, obviously, the analysis presented tonight is strictly focused on wildfire, because, I, I mean, it's not, it's not a question of when another wildfire, you know, if another wildfire is going to happen in our area, it's when. That is also the truth for an earthquake, and given the fact that we have a fault zone that is increasing with activity, that has the potential for an 8.0 magnitude earthquake, what does that mean for our, an evacuation plan where we've got a very tiny little road, two roads coming out of Oldagora, one of which has a very small bridge? What if that bridge collapses? What if any damage happens to the two other bridges here at Reyes Adobe and Canaan that would require people to get out of the city? As, you know, we, I was very, very young when North Ridge happened, but as other earthquakes have happened in California and elsewhere, gas lines get severed, and then spark fires, too. So there's a lot of other associated risks and unfortunate events that can happen just with an earthquake. And so I'm curious to know, like, to me, a wildfire is a pretty, you know, on-the-nose, like, recent thing that we're all very concerned about, and I feel like we might be forgetting the other danger that's always looming in California, which are earthquakes, and we've had a few recently, and predicted that they could actually get much larger than what we've experienced. I'm curious to know, like, I know this analysis doesn't even touch on that, but what is the city thinking about that? Should city council consider that as part of a model? Because that's another scenario that's very real.
The multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan speaks about earthquakes in the region, and that would, when they say the region, they mean Westlake Village, Calabasas, Agora Hills, North Hills, and Malibu. And so that was adopted already, it was analyzed and approved by the, by the federal government, by FEMA, and then it was also updated. So the way that the process works is you do your multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, you get it approved by FEMA, then after it's approved by FEMA, you send it to the state to make sure it's consistent with state law, the state gives you feedback, if it's good, they approve it, and then it's certified. If it's not, if they want to see changes, they tell you what those changes are going to be. And in those situations, that did happen, the hazard mitigation plan was amended, it is consistent with state law, and we adopted the most current version, and that's the version we're asking, asking to be included in the safety element now. The multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for the Los Virginas-Malibu Council of Governments does speak to all manner of, of natural disasters, it speaks to earthquakes, it speaks to liquefaction, it speaks to everything. So we are aware that a large earthquake, that we are overdue for, for an earthquake, we, everyone is aware, the whole fault, from San Francisco all the way down, is aware that there's increased activity, and those, if there is a large earthquake, it's likely going to touch more than just one city, it's going to touch a region, and so that's being handled at the, handled at the state and the COG level, not in, there's nothing for us to do, it's being handled, we communicate with the COG, and they work together, and they have the plan.
Got it, I'm not sure if that fully addresses, or, I mean, I, I guess I somewhat understand the answer, but I guess, to ask it again, right, so the mitigation, the multi- jurisdictional mitigation plan includes an evacuation scenario for the city of Agora Hills in the event of the fault here in the Santa Monica Mountains giving an 8.0 earthquake?
No, the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan recognizes that earthquakes are one of the hazards that we have to prepare for, and it speaks to what infrastructure is available, and it speaks to possible evacuation routes throughout the region, Los Virginas, PCH, if PCH is open, the 101, it looks at everything regionally, it doesn't look at one city, because if there's an earthquake like that, it's going to touch more than one city. So, no one, no one has modeled an 8.0 earthquake in the city of Agora Hills. And quite frankly, we are, we're all susceptible to the earthquake, but historically, Agora Hills has been more susceptible to fire. So the decision was made to model the most realistic natural disaster or hazard at the worst-case scenario, and so that's why you don't see an earthquake in here.
Well, I appreciate that. I, that, that does, I think, for me, change how I'm thinking about this, because again, given, you know, if one of the bridges goes down, right, those capacities that we're even just analyzing for a fire look a lot different, I think, in the, in the situation of an earthquake. I, I will, I will cede my time to my fellow commissioners if there are any questions, it looks like Commissioner Stein, but I want to thank, thank everyone for their responses.
Yeah, first of all, I do want to thank staff for the presentation, but talking about alternative scenarios, I'm now thinking, what happens if fire is coming from the south, forcing us to evacuate to the north through Oak Park? Has Oak Park have any kind of evacuation plan that would take our traffic to evacuate out of Agora Hills?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what Ventura County's emergency management system is, or how they are managing traffic through Oak Park. One of the scenarios that we did run was a fire from the south, and if the fire came from the south, how would you evacuate? So we did model a fire from the south, but the fire from the south did not model everyone going out through Oak Park. I'll defer to Matt to give you more information on what the, what the south fire modeled.
Thank you for your question. I, I do want to note, the city's evacuation plan does call for some residents on the north of Canaan to go north through Oak Park. So that's, that's the plan that was not included in this analysis, because we wanted to assess worst-case, which would be all residents, like, coming into the city and getting on the freeway. But if the plan were followed, which of course every fire is different, but if, if it were followed, some residents would actually be going north, and there would be even fewer volumes on the city's road. So even in the scenario, fire from the south, we do analyze all vehicles going towards US 101. So it doesn't, it doesn't include a scenario where all vehicles would go north towards Oak Park, it assumes that US 101 would remain a safe gateway, Bert, for that analysis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Plitzer?
Yeah, I have a question. I live in Oldagora over 44 years, and I didn't see driver as an evacuation route. Where does driver come into this plan?
I'll let Matt explain that. Robbie, will you pull up the exhibit that shows the emergency, that one?
So, the evacuation plan for Oldagora, it's pretty detailed in which streets each resident should take. So although driver was not shown on the, the table showing the volume to capacity, it was assessed internally, like, every street along the way that residents would take was assessed, and that- In that case, it was, it was determined that the further point along that route, so as residents get to Driver Avenue, they would then go towards the Palo Comato-Chesbrough interchange. And that would be the point on that route with the highest volume. So once Driver becomes Palo Comato, and it's still one lane, the total volume was tallied and the volume to capacity was assessed at that point. So further upstream on Driver, there would be slightly fewer vehicles, and the volume to capacity ratio would be a little bit lower. But, so that, that's how it was assessed in this plan. And in terms of the plan itself for evacuation, it is incorporated as a route.
No further questions? Commissioner Sharon, looks like you might have a few.
Oh, my mic was on the whole time. Okay. So I was looking at the map where, you guys didn't actually have it on here, but in your packet, it was figure eight and nine. And it basically had each scenario in, like, a map of the city with each, each of the main roads, like, Canaan and T, Canaan and Reyes Adobe being in red, and then scenario one where Canaan was in or, yellow or something like that. And so, and that just signifies the chart that you, it's an image of the chart that you showed us, but a map of the chart you showed us. But my question is, is like, when those become high capacity, and it overflows to other, like, there's a ripple effect, right? Am I correct? And so, and so I'm curious to know if capacity becomes too much on Canaan, does that mean it backs up and makes too much capacity on, like, TO? Or, like, how, how, I don't know. So my question is, is that even right? Or am I totally wrong? And can you correct me if I'm wrong?
That is correct for scenario one. I'll point out for scenario two, where it's just the city's residents evacuating along Canaan, the, the volume to capacity ratio would remain below one, indicating there's sufficient capacity on that route. For scenario one, where the Oak Park residents are also taking Canaan, the V over C is above one along Canaan. There's available capacity on Thousand Oaks, so that's why one of the implementation measures would be to station emergency personnel there to reroute people onto TO rather than continuing on Canaan. If, if that's based on the flow of the fire, there may be ability to route them onto TO and then onto Reyes Adobe. Did I fully answer your question?
Yes, thank you. So for the zones that are, the roads that are high capacity or at capacity or high, or higher, that the, the objective is to have personnel of some sort in those places to move traffic to different places. But those are our gateways, right? So, like, what's the solution? Like, does that make sense? Like, you can reroute me to Canwood to Reyes Adobe from Canaan, but now, like, Can, Reyes Adobe is still at a high-capacity location. So it, it's like moving, it's like, you know, it's moving one problem to another place, you know what I mean? So, like, is that just something that, like, we have to deal with? Because this is the way, we only have two, three, four, we only have, like, four gateways. We can't change that. It's not, it's impossible to change. So is that just something that, you know, we've identified it so we can manage it in the moment, but there's really nothing we can do about it? I'm just curious, because I don't know. I, I'd love to know.
Yeah, so the V over C being above one is why it indicates that implementation measures should be implemented to facilitate the flow of evacuation. And to reiterate, this is truly a worst case where the whole city is asked to evacuate all at once. So it could be more likely that Reyes Adobe is more available while Canaan is very backed up, and that is a potential route. The two safe gateways on the east side of the city, Palo Comato and Liberty, those both, the freeway on-ramps can, there's far more capacity than there is demand.
Yeah.
The Reyes Adobe and Canaan are closer to that threshold. By implementing the method we talked about, staffing and rerouting, plus counterflow, does add quite a bit of capacity.
Okay. Right, thank you. And then, I don't know who would answer this question, but we have the FLOC system. Is there any way to analyze data from the Kenneth Fire based on traffic flows, patterns, scenario? Like, is there any way to get realistic information, or maybe, like, cellphone data during that period of evacuation to understand what was happening and learn from that?
Yes, it is possible to get sanitized cellphone data, and we did use that when we had to remodel the, the Woolsey Fire. For the purposes of this exercise, I'm, I want to understand why that would be, the state law only requires a certain number of things. Yes, we could, we could have asked council for the money to be able to do another study that looked at the sanitized cellphone data, and what it would, what it would tell us is...
So where I'm getting to is, I don't, I know that you guys ran multiple scenarios. I don't think that they're sufficient in terms of, like, in terms of, like, what, what we have to, what we should base our analysis on. I think a 5:00 AM fire is very unlikely. I think that's the highest due point. It's, it's like, there's a lot of, a midnight fire I get is, like, basically the same scenario, just the time has shifted. I understand. So it's like, I understand you guys were going for a nighttime scenario situation, but I think the sec, and I know that you had one with from the east, south and north, but I think we need to account for a scenario where we have businesses open, full capacity of schools. I know my kids go to a school where a lot of the people live in Cali, in, past Calabasas, like, in the valley and in Thousand Oaks. So, you know, that's important to analyze.
Sorry, Commissioner Sharon, if I may, this is the time for questions. So I think you might be veering into deliberation. So if you'd like to wrap up the question, then we can hear from the public, and then we can go back to deliberation.
Okay, I'll, I'll pause. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick my neck out and ask the last question on housing. Obviously, we have the Regency. I know you did discuss, or you did mention this, you know, that the housing element was included. But if you wouldn't mind just, you know, we have Oak Park to the north. We've, we've got new housing coming online in the city of Agora Hills. Just as a final note before we open up to, to other sections of, of the hearing, could you just one more time share how that was identified and captured within the analysis that was presented tonight?
Sure thing. I'm going to defer to Matt for that, because he's the traffic, the traffic engineer.
Thank you. Yes, the, the full build-out of the general plan with the housing element is modeled in the analysis within the city of Agora Hills. So it's, I don't have the exact number, but it's all the AHO sites and the additional housing, they're assigned from the locations where they're planned and where they're approved to be constructed, and they're routed on the same evacuation routes to the safe gateways. That only evaluates the housing planned in the city of Agora Hills. So it doesn't evaluate any additional housing that may be built to the north or south or west of the city. But the number of vehicles that are modeled coming from those other areas is assumed to be conservative and reflective of a high number of vehicles entering the city from those other places.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Sharon, looks like she's got a final question.
Does FEMA require a periodic update of this analysis? And what triggers a update?
FEMA reviewed and approved the original multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. California state law requires us to update the analysis and the safety element if a hazard mitigation plan is revised or a new one is adopted.
Okay, so if we do not touch this multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for, I don't know, 10 years, does that mean we're not running an analysis for 10 years?
No, we have to run the analysis whenever a housing cycle comes through. So we look at all, we looked at all of the, the evacuation routes and the capabilities of our roadway network in 2022 when the city council adopted the general plan update. So every eight years, we're required to take a look at our safety element and our land, land use element. We have to look at all of the elements that would need to be, would need to address whatever our fair share of housing is supposed to be. So we did that in '22. We're doing it now because the hazard mitigation plan was updated, so we're looking at the analysis now. If the COG updates the HMP again, then we will, we will have to amend the safety element again. The next time, the next regularly scheduled time that we're due after this time to take a look at the safety element is for cycle seven of RENA, which begins in '29.
Understood. And do the, does this analysis take into consideration population growth up until 2029?
This analysis takes into account the build-out of the general plan. So the general plan is the guiding document for development within the city. So it takes into account what the ultimate population will be in 2035 when the general plan sunsets, plus the housing elements, that, the housing element sites, plus the areas outside of the city that are likely to evacuate through our city.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Stein?
I'll, I'll defer to your comments from...
All right, great, thank you. Commissioner Plaizer? Fantastic. Moving on then, we will move to ex parte communications. Do any commissioners have ex parte communications to disclose tonight?
Commissioner Stein spoke with staff.
No, I don't. No.
Commissioner Roth similarly spoke with staff. Great, I'm going to move to public comment. So the public hearing is open. I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please hand it to our clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Great. City Clerk, do we have any public comments tonight?
Thank you, Chair Roth. Written public comments were received by email before 4:00 PM, the 4:00 PM deadline today, and forwarded to the planning commission, and they will be part of the record. Public comments were received from the following people. Stephen Nimoy, Jessica Nimoy, Marcia Castagay, Castan Gay, Patricia Aloy, Ron Troncotti, Corey Jackel, Rami Brash, Ellie Hawkinson, Michelle Santucci, Jess Thomas, Jason R. Sanders on behalf of PRISM, which is protectors and residents in the Santa Monica Mountains, and Jackie Lacombe.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments in the chambers tonight? I think we do.
We, we have received a written public comment from Mary Wise Brock of Agora Hills, and that comment will be included in the record and has been distributed on the dais this evening. It's the Save Open Space document that you should all have on your dais. We also have some speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mary Wise Brock, to be followed by Carolyn Cass Barton.
Great, thank you. Welcome. Your three minutes to speak will end when your red light appears on the podium. And you may adjust the microphone as you need, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Agora Hills Planning Commission. In the interest of helping to achieve safe evacuations for thousands evacuating on Canaan, north and south, and Driver Avenue, the busiest street in our city, you will be making a recommendation to the city council. Will you please consider recommending to the city council that they remove the now-allowed controversial new housing on congested Canaan Road and Driver Avenue, which is the busiest street in our city, and replace it with a feasible alternative? One feasible alternative is the two-acre nursery site near the 101 freeway. The nursery site can be made 100% affordable by removing the three Canaan Road shopping centers and the Kaladney Driver location, and even the Ave, and utilizing the two-acre nursery site, there will be no net loss of affordable units. The affordable units planned for these locations, the three Canaan shopping centers, Driver, and even the Ave, can all fit within the nursery site by making it 100% affordable with using the high unit potential that is on the nursery site. You can verify this in the charts that I will turn in tonight. The nursery site is already on the city's Housing Opportunities Site List. Besides Save Open Space Santa Monica Mountains, supporters for using the nursery site include PRISM, which is the protectors and residents in the Santa Monica Mountains, STACK, and the California Native Plant Society, and I will turn in their letter to you tonight. If the city council follows the planning commission recommendation, then this recommendation will help in making the required finding that the General Plan 2035 will not significantly impact thousands of people's risk of injury or death involving wildland fires. Thank you for your service as our planning commissioners. Mary Wise Brock, Chair of Save Open Space and 49-year resident of Agora Hills. And I wanted to thank Britt and Morgan for their questions about schools. The intent of the state law on range of scenarios includes range of scenarios. We need a scenario because seven schools use the Canaan Road. At the morning, you know that happens at AM peak, you know that happens at 3:00 PM when they all get out, including 40% of Oak Park schools.
Thank you very much. Will the next speaker please come to the podium?
The next speaker is Carolyn Cass Barton, followed by Jackie Lacombe. And I apologize if I've mispronounced anyone's names this evening.
Great, and apologies for the mic being cut. We are on, we have a number of items tonight, so let's try to keep it to three minutes.
I'll try.
Your three minutes will end when the red light appears on the podium, and please just adjust what you just did, the microphone at your need.
Yes, thank you. I have lived in Oak Park for the last 46 years, so I'm here to let you know how I feel about Oak Park. I have spoken at all three, of all the meetings three years ago, that, at that time, I submitted a packet of information for the general plan update. That was in 2022. And I'm asking for that information to be put into the official record for this hearing, please. It includes many articles about evacuation in the state, especially a study from UC Berkeley, which I received in an email from the author in 2022, and I submitted to Jessica in June of 2022. Okay, there's been multiple articles, such as how we analyze California's wildfire evacuation routes, and this definitely mentions Oak Park and, including Pacific Palisades. These are already been submitted. Okay, the article that I am reminding you of is that Oak Park is in the worst 1% of the state when it comes to population to evacuation route ratios, more than Northern California and Central California combined. There's at least 10,000 people evacuating down Canaan. Oak Park has a greater numbers of people, bringing the highest-risk zones, living in the highest-risk zones per lane of major roadway out compared to Paradise, California. When we have our, our fire season, it is usually in the Santa Ana wind times, which means they come from the north, which means they come from the Seamy Hills behind Oak Park. That is our reason for evacuating down Canaan Road. There's only two ways out of Oak Park at that time. When we evacuated from the Woolsey Fire, it took us 45 minutes to get down Canaan during, normally is a two-mile, two-minute, excuse me, two-mile ride through the freeway. And I want to thank you specifically, Mr. Roth, for mentioning that Oak Park and Oak Park schools, because we have a considerable amount of out-of-district students in our schools, which severely impacts the daytime traffic in situations on Canaan Road. So thank you for mentioning Oak Park.
So, thank you for mentioning Oak Park. There's an official Oak Park position, a letter that was sent to the Agoura Hills City Council, and it states in this letter, it's already been submitted in 2022, that during the Woolsey Fire, Oak Park residents became acutely aware of the terror from fleeing a wildfire and how difficult it was to evacuate when Canaan, the key evacuation route, became congested. Subsequently, in a study of evacuation routes by the University of California Institute of Transportation Studies, Oak Park was identified being within the worst 1% of the state. Express my concerns for Oak Park, and please consider that when you're doing your planning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jackie Lacombe, followed by Michelle Santucci.
Good evening, commissioners. A lot of my to bring up have already been covered. My name is Jackie Lacombe, and I'm here to express serious concern about the inadequacy and danger of the city's current evacuation analysis, especially as it pertains to Old Agoura. Driver Avenue is the only evacuation route for most Old Agoura residents. During the Woolsey Fire, I witnessed the gridlock. Horse trailers couldn't get out. They didn't account for people coming back and forth to get horses. They could only take one at a time, some of them. Is my mic not working right? Now, the city plans to significantly, significantly increase the number of vehicles and residents using the same choke point on Old Agoura. Many animals were left behind because people couldn't get back in to get them out. Old Agoura is a rural, high-risk fire community with unique needs. It's unacceptable and dangerous to increase density here based on this scary evacuation analysis. Based on the discussions that we've had here tonight, it's clear that this is going to be a scary situation when it happens. And the fact that the city is proposing to put 500-plus units now on the corner of Canaan and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and another, up to 44 units on the corner of Driver and Kaladney, is terrifying to me. Please don't gamble with our residents' lives by approving this evacuation plan. Your role is to advise the city council on land development issues. Please let them know that this evacuation plan is inadequate and dangerous, and that upzoning without considering the consequences in an emergency is negligent. Thanks for your time, and thanks for all the great questions that a lot of you asked tonight.
Public comment? Next public speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Michelle Santucci, followed by Jana Orkney.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Terrific. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the subject of the recently published evaluation analysis and proposed Agoura Hills evacuation plan. I'm Michelle Santucci, and I'm an Oak Park resident of over 26 years. I'm also a member of the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Committee. However, my comments this evening do not represent the Oak Park MAC or the County of Ventura. I was going to stay on script and read the letter that I sent earlier, and I will read that probably in record speed so I can stay under my three minutes. But before I get there, I wanted to just make a couple of comments from what I heard this evening, and I want to particularly thank Commissioners Sharon, Roth, and Stein for your comments and your questions. They were spot on. They are very much in terms in line of what I was planning to ask this evening. A couple of things, and also Director Thomas, thank you for your comments and acknowledging the Ventura County's response to the Kenneth Fire. That was not contained quickly, but forward progress was stopped quickly. There were hotspots that remained for two weeks following that the Ventura County managed. I appreciate the presentation that was distilled from the 182-page report. One of the things about the flaws of the scenario is about the number of Oak Park vehicles. I'm not sure where that number came from, but I can tell you, based on my own observation, and I know my community pretty well, there are three to four cars for almost every household. So, I'd like for that number to be revisited. It seems way off compared to what it should be. The evacuation time that was used for the scenario, if we think back to the last three to four fires that have come through this community from the north and northeast, the evacuation orders came in the afternoon and early evenings. I don't recall ever there being any type of threat in the early morning hours. So, I think we need to look at the afternoon hours when the areas are at high capacity with schools, with customers and businesses, with businesses open, with a lot of commuting of people working in the area. I think that is a more worst-case scenario than the 5:00 AM that was used when people are sleeping. Mandatory versus voluntary, we all know this is a human reaction. So, everyone is going to hear whatever they hear, and they're going to evacuate, and so I don't think we can rely on any type of modeling to that regard. And satisfying the state requirement should be a minimum. I don't think that that's enough. As you know, historically, wildfire threat to our communities has come from the north and northeast of Agoura Hills. The most devastating.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public speakers tonight?
Our last public speaker this evening is Jana Orkney.
Thank you very much. And yes, the mic will cut off at three minutes tonight. Appreciate it, and feel free to adjust the mic down. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jana Orkney from Oak Park, and I really appreciate the seriousness of all of you and your, your questions on this evacuation plan. A few things stand out for me, and that seems to be a total lack of communication with Ventura County, which I would please beg you to work together. It isn't just the COG cities in Los Angeles that count, because we're going to be on your roads trying to get out. And it seems like, I, I'm just surprised there wasn't some communication. And the other thing is, I would say this report is inadequate because of the lack of range of scenarios, and we're all bringing that up. Five in the morning, north of the freeway, south of the freeway, ain't enough, folks, when you have seven schools feeding into Canaan. I mean, really? And what's going to be happening? I think that has to be looked at, at least communication with the schools. Do they have any plans? I don't know that they do, and so there is that. Then, this thing of counterflow on Canaan. Give me a break, folks. We have a median going down the middle. Okay, so you're going to have all four lanes, as said, they're going to have all four lanes coming. Am I off? No. Oh, I'm on. All four lanes. Well, they said then you need 20 feet for the emergency vehicles to go the other way. Well, is that the bike lane? That's not 20 feet wide. So, unless we remove the medians, I don't think you can do counterflow on Canaan. And the other thing, surging, really? I'm going to get to the corner of TO and Canaan, and someone's going to say, oh, no, you go another few miles. You go down to Ray's Adobe, because it's faster. How are they going to know? What kind of communications are there going to be between people on Ray's Adobe and Canaan? And I think people are going to say, uh-uh, I ain't. I'm going to the closest freeway ramp I know. And I think that this surging has to be looked at, counterflow has to be looked at, too. And as you can see, my voice is getting a little quavery. We've all been in fires, you know, and I did evacuate this, this last time in January, when they had a one-hour mandatory evacuation. It's scary as heck. So, it's, it's life and death, folks. So, make it the best report you can. Don't just satisfy state requirements, but make it work for us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment.
We have no further speakers this evening. Chair Roth.
Great, thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing, do any commissioners have any further questions of staff? Commissioner Stein?
Yeah, Commissioner. I just really want to get understanding. First of all, thank you all for coming, giving your comments. I listened, I concerned. I live in Agoura Hills myself. I've been mandatory evacuated, door knocked at 2:00 in the morning, get out. I've been out of town. My wife calls, another fire, we're being evacuated. I get it. It's, it is a scary situation. Question that I really have when I've been going through this is, we only have 23 routes to get in and out of Agoura Hills. If we don't approve this plan, if we go to, let's say, worst-case scenario, there's an earthquake, which then causes fires, and the fires are going everywhere, you can't get out. And we, do we not have a plan then? I mean, you know, because my concern is, I don't think we'll ever get an appropriate plan that's going to please everybody. And if we don't do anything, are we then just stuck with what we have? Or do we keep going back and trying to amend and amend and amend this? And ultimately, it gets to the point is, we'll come up with a plan that just shows that stay in place, because if you leave, you're not going to be able to get out. So, that's my only question is that if we don't do anything, what happens? If we don't approve this plan? I mean, we can just keep going on and on and coming up with more and more scenarios to all, to me, ultimately, it'll just tell us that there is no effective way of getting out of Agoura Hills if the worst scenario occurs.
Emergency management occurs in lots of different ways. If you do not, if we do not adopt, first of all, our housing element requires us to adopt an evacuation plan and an evacuation analysis. State law requires us to adopt an amendment to our safety element to address the updated hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan itself has some guidance for, for earthquakes, but if the earthquake hits and the whole entire city is, is engulfed, that would be a worst-case scenario, and we could model for that. But at the end of the day, we have 66,690 vehicles per hour that we can move on our existing roadways. We have four fixed, safe gateways. We're not going to get more fixed gateways within our four square miles. Those are the constraints. So, would the, if there is an earthquake and we are trapped in the middle of the city and there's an earthquake, there are other agencies around that know, that would know we are going through an earthquake, and they have mutual aid agreements. So, you would have Ventura County and LA County, just like we did with the Kenneth Fire, all working together. You would have Cal Fire, you would have Cal OES, you would have, you would have Cal Trans. With respect to the schools, the school districts have their own plan. They did this exact same exercise to determine how they were going to evacuate their children. They can't put their plan on, online, because they are protecting the children. So, they have a plan, and they work, they're one of the partners that gets called as part of the incident. So, the school districts would get called, and all of the emergency services people would get solved. If there is, this plan is adopted. So, if there's another, another emergency, just like we used it for Kenneth, we'll use it for the next fire. So, this plan is adopted. But the analysis does the specific requirements that state law requires, and if we do not adopt an analysis, then that can be an issue for the state, and they would likely reach out to us and ask us. We would be on that list of people who are defying the state law. Is that something that our council would want us to do? We could study other scenarios. If the council wants us to pay to model some other scenario, but I can, I agree with you. You can come up with a scenario that you believe is the worst case, and you will have six people telling you that's not really the worst case. The worst case is something else. So, at some point, the worst, the worst case has to be determined, and the issue is, the worst case means something different to everyone. And so, what we were modeling, this is a feasibility analysis of our existing roadway. What we modeled was, what are the extents? How much capacity do we have in our roadways? And that is what we did. We put as many vehicles as we possibly could on the road. Is it possible that people have six, seven vehicles, and they, if you're a two-person household, I'm not really sure how you would get all those vehicles out at the same time, and if you were going back, and once you leave the emergency area, I don't know that you would necessarily be able to come back in. My household has more vehicles than I have humans to drive them. So, I, too, understand what it is, what it means to have an abundance of vehicles and not enough drivers. There are an infinite set of data points and scenarios and assumptions one can make. State law doesn't require us to have an exhaustive list of every possible scenario. What they want you to do is to test the limits of your network to see if you have problems so that before an emergency happens, you can pivot and make whatever the necessary adjustments are. I don't doubt that an earthquake that catches the whole city on fire and no one can get to us is a worst case. I'm not sure how that changes our, our network at that point. If you have no way to get in and no way to get out, that is a problem. But is that the most prevalent hazard that we face? And the most prevalent hazard historically that we have faced has been fire. So, let's figure out how, in the event of the most prevalent hazards, that we can move people to safety, and that's what this exercise was about.
One more question, you know, so, heard from a lot of people from Oak Park. Is there a way that maybe we can include additional communication with our neighbor to the north, as well as Malibu to the south? I mean, because I know that there's a lot of communities talking, but, you know, just so that everybody would feel more comfortable that Agoura Hills is just not doing things on its own, that it is communicating with our neighbors so that they're aware also of this, you know, issue coming up? Because I don't know what other solutions we really have.
The emergency evacuation plan lists, a list of partners, and that list of partners is not a finite list. Our city manager was on the phone with people at the federal, state, and local level. We were speaking, we clearly speak to Ventura County. Otherwise, the incident commander would not have transferred command of the Kenneth Fire to Ventura. So, we are speaking to one another. Are the, is the staff communicating directly with Oak Park residents? I can't say that we are. It's all that we can do to communicate directly with the residents that we have. Would we be interested in a partnership with, with Malibu and Wesley? Everything in the COG is already, we already have communications established. It's my understanding that there is an open line of communication between the city of Agoura Hills and the county of Ventura, just as it is with the, with the county of LA. That doesn't necessarily mean that Ventura, or that Agoura Hills is communicating with Ventura County residents on an intimate basis, the way that we communicate with Agoura Hills residents. And I can raise that as an issue, or you can recommend that the council take a look at that. But at the end of the day, if your recommendation, if you don't believe that state law, that the items in state law are present in the evacuation analysis, not, I disagree with your assumptions, do they exist? Then you either make a decision for yourself whether or not it's compliant with state law or it's not, and you vote yes, it is, or no, it isn't, and we send that recommendation to the council, and then the council will make their decision from there. So, you, it's up to you. You read it, and you determine individually whether or not you believe that there's adequate information in there to address what state law requires.
Thank you. And I understood earlier that this plan can be amended and updated as, in two years or four years. So, this could be, it's not a final plan. It's always going to be, if I understood correctly, 2029, we'll be addressing this again. So, we have to start somewhere, and then as we learn, we can be moving forward and coming up with better ideas for the, if there's going to be a future amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The plans, none of these plans are set, and forever only those plans. So, yes, if the council sees a need to direct city manager hamburger to have us take a look at the commission and other study, or if we find that it is, the council finds that it's, it's inadequate, and they don't see all of the state provisions, then they will likely take action accordingly.
Thank you. I have no more further questions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sharon?
So, I'm happy that someone reminded me of the car capacity, and, and I addressed that earlier in my questions, but, you know, we just talked about it again. You know, we are, we do have a lot, and that was my point of bringing it up, is like, we do have a lot of people with multiple cars, than more than just two, in this city. A lot of the people in this city. A lot of the people in this city have the privilege of giving their 16-year-olds and their 18-year-olds and whatever cars. So there are way more cars, in my opinion, than a national average, where maybe people live in city centers where they don't have any cars. So like, I, I would be curious to know if we pulled data from, is it possible that we can pull data from registered vehicles in the city of Agoura Hills and say, okay, we, we know that there's this many vehicles registered in here? And we can base data off of that? And again, I, you know, it might be, it might be off by 10, you know, plus or minus 10, 100, whatever. But I think that there's a lot of concern around, like, the fact that there are multiple, more than two cars in a lot of our neighbors' driveways. And a lot more than just two drivers, too. So, you know, there's, it accounts for more capacity. Does it not?
I'll let you answer the question about registered vehicles, and I'll, yes. There may be more cars. There are some households that have less. And so it's an average. And so the average is used. If the council wants us to run the models again with different inputs, we'll do what they ask us to do. If the study before you tonight doesn't satisfy, doesn't, in your opinion, satisfy what the state law requires, then you make, you explain why you believe it's inadequate, why it doesn't meet state law, and then your recommendation will be whatever your recommendation is.
And then, do we have, or did we take into, did we ever ask, or I guess it's probably public, do we, did we take into account Ventura County's evacuation analysis and how they, you know, specifically for Oak Park? And take that into account and how they plan to evacuate? And, you know, their numbers and their data?
We didn't coordinate our evacuation analysis with Ventura County's evacuation analysis. What we did was, we looked at historical fires, the Woolsey fire in particular, and we took all of the traffic analysis zones that would, that evacuated during the Woolsey fire, and we modeled, we put them on our road. So if you were to take a look at the total number of zones that are adjacent to the city of Agoura Hills, the ones that would most likely go through, would go through Canaan, we took them. We didn't think about whether or not they actually have a different evacuation route through Ventura County, because we didn't believe that that was conservative. We believed conservatively, taking those trips and incorporating them into our roadway network would give us the answers that we needed.
If we don't adopt this in the timeframe that the state has required, what are the consequences?
We would receive a letter from the state telling us that we're in violation, and then there's a series, we would have an opportunity to become compliant, and then there's a series of enforcement actions that they can take up to, and including decertifying our housing element, in which case we would be open to developer remedies. So we wouldn't be able to apply our standards any longer. They would be able to come in and say, this piece of property, we'd like to do it, and we wouldn't be able to apply our standards.
Got it. And so, obviously, we don't want that. But, so they would give us a portion of time to comply if, if, you know, we show evidence of, like, going back and forth or working out the details, does that suffice that, that portion of, like, like a timeframe to comply?
It could. But the way that the state law is written, they, the way that the state law has written the penalties, which is, I believe it's up to $10,000 a day that you are not in compliance, goes back to the day of the incursion, and you have to pay that fee. And so that is the reason that we try to maintain compliance with the state, because we're a small community, and I care about our resources.
That's exactly the kind of response I wanted to hear. I wanted to know exactly, like, the, the financial, the impact, the, exactly that. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Any last questions? Commissioner Platzer?
What is the time limit, limit to amend this or say yes to it?
So tonight's item can be broken up. The, the amendment to the safety element, which is in Chapter 5, that references things, references documents that are already approved and don't require further, don't require further action. So you could, you could recommend approval of the amendments in Article 5 and not approve. The evacuation plan is also adopted, so that doesn't require you. It's the evacuation analysis, because the evacuation analysis is where the capacity analysis is. So if we don't approve it, then I can't send it to HCD, which is the Housing and Community Development Department. So for HCD, what they're going to see is, you haven't done a capacity analysis, you haven't identified where your evacuation routes are, even though we have, and they will treat us as though we're non-compliant in those regards. The goal is to get, the goal is to get this approved into the city council, or get this through you to the city council for May 28th, and for the city council to deliberate and take action on that day. If we do that, then we should be fine. We haven't received the, we're not on their radar yet for not having adopted it, because this all is new. The hazard mitigation plan was just recently adopted by our council, because it was just recently approved by Cal Fire. So we have a little bit of time, but not a lot.
Hearing, no other questions? I think I'm good as well for right now. Great. Now, there being no further questions, I will close the public hearing. We are going to now move on to deliberations. Would each commissioner also state whether or not they can make, I've got written here the findings, but obviously, we're not making findings. It's a little bit different tonight, but love to hear your opinions, and we can start deliberation. Commissioner Stein, see you rushing over there.
Yes. First of all, again, thank everybody, the staff, all the questions, a lot of other people asked a lot of the questions. I wanted to wait. The, the concerns that I have is, we could just keep going and going and going and try to come up with a plan that makes everybody happy. I'm looking at what we're required to look at, and that's the state law. I, I find that the analysis has met the state law. The population, it looked at the routes, it looked at capacity. Is it safe? Is it viable? And therefore, I approve staff's recommendation to pass this to the city council.
Commissioner Platzer?
This is a very difficult situation. I find it very complicated. So I suggest continuing the decision and getting input from the community, because I, I just received this recently, and there's a lot of information. And with the new housing units, it's going to be more complicated. I've lived in Odagora 44 years. My evacuation route is driver, and driver's not even part of the evacuation route. And I either go to Chesbrough, or I go to Canaan. And I've been through four evacuations in 44 years, the worst being Woolsey fire. I have two adult children living in my house. I have five livestock llamas and alpacas. I have a dog I've got a cockatoo. I'm the first to get out, but it is, and I'm very, I, I have PTSD after each fire. In the Kenneth fire, we were very, very lucky. We were very fortunate, because it was coming straight to Odagora. So just going to work in the morning at 8:00. It takes me 10 minutes to make a left-hand turn on Fairview and driver. And that's during school hours. If there was an earthquake or wildfire, it would be, it would be a disaster. And with climate changes and low rainfall, wildfires will be annual. It'll be year-round. And the devastation of Pacific Palisades and Eaton Fire, Sunset Boulevard is a, was a great evacuation route, but people left their car in the middle of the road, and they, and they had to leave and flee. And I would hate to see this in, in Odagora. So the wise decision would be to continue this matter and listen to the input from the community, and make a proper decision, and comply with state law. So I would probably not agree with this at this time.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sharon?
So I'm torn, because there's three things here we need to recommend. I, I think the updated mitigation, hazard mitigation plan, or let me, let me correct Making the changes to the table contents in Chapter 5. I look through it. I think that everything looks good. I have issues with the updated evacuation analysis, which is part of Chapter 5. So I am, it's hard for me to fully align with it. And then making the findings of the exemption under sequel, that, I can find that as well. So what I would like to do, because there is a true consequence for not moving this forward to council, and I'm trying to make it all work, what I would like to recommend to council is that we implement different scenario, a different scenario. I think having two 5:00 AM scenarios doesn't make sense. I think that, I, I understand the need for a scenario from two different locations, but our most recent, I think, was it three fires we had in, well, not we, but three fires that were happening in Malibu, the, it always pushed towards the coast. And so I think having a scenario from Oak Park is, or north of us, makes sense. I think having a scenario coming from, you know, the Chesbrough open space makes sense. I think not having a 5:00 AM scenario does not make sense. I think we need to have, you know, I, forestry firefighting is in my family, and my dad, my brother did it for 10 years, and he, you know, shared with me that forest fires don't come out of nowhere at 5:00 AM. It is the highest dew point. It is, unless there's a red flag warning, and there's no dew point, there could be a situation, but at that point, the whole community is on alert because of the, the scenario. And so I would like to see a scenario played out with, with children in school, people that are not familiar with our town, in our town. I would like to see what it would look like if, you know, it's a hot summer day, and there's, like, a bunch of tourists in Malibu that now have to come our way. There's, like, there's something about having everyone at home buy their cars with their loved ones, seems like just the perfect scenario, like, not the worst-case scenario. But I understand that you guys were trying to show what we would have to do if everyone had to flee at a moment's notice. And we can only get that number based on, like, the, you know, how many people live in our, our city at one time. And so I'm, I'm really torn, but I, I would love to see if there's one, is there a way we can move this forward, but also have a recommendation that council consider another scenario? And is there enough time to run another scenario? I have no idea what the cost or timeframe takes in terms of, you know, running scenarios and models.
The, yes, it's possible for the recommendation from the commission is that the council directs staff to run another scenario. That can be a, that can be a recommendation. The cost of running said scenario and the length of time it takes, the last time we took this, it's a very detailed scenario to run these, and my, the last time we ran them, they take over a week by themselves just to run, and then they have to compile the information. So it's likely we would not, it's likely this wouldn't get, if that's their recommendation and they keep it, it's not something that we can just do because it's directed by the planning commission. It has budgetary impacts, and there's no allocation to run the model again and again and again. So what we would have to do is get the council to direct Nate to make it happen. And if they were to do that, we would, we would run the analysis. The information we have is the analysis that we ran.
Understood. And I, I'm also really present to the fact that you're meeting, in your analysis, you are meeting the state requirements. I just am concerned that we're, like, we're, we took, like, the easiest scenarios, like, and that concerns me. And I'm also really present to the fact that if, do we have, I guess, like, we also need to have an evacuation analysis, and we can't just not have this passed. So that's it, I guess, for now.
Thank you very much. I, I definitely came to this with a different mindset, hearing the questions that have been raised and, and comments from staff, and wanted also to say, like, thank you all for bearing with our questions. You know, I, I am coming to, I think, a very similar position in terms of, I, I see how, I see how the, the analysis, one, I see, I can make all the findings, right? I can see how the analysis comports with what the state law requires, full stop. Like, that does exist. I also similarly feel like the lived experience that we've all kind of gone through recently, which suggests that we should probably take a, you know, a different approach at, at defining what we, we might think is worst-case scenario. I do think there are elements to this, you know, that are unpredictable, and probably we'll never be able to find an analysis that would cover. You know, my, my position is, I think we should move this tonight. Hearing HCD is an authority, authority that could come in and say, we are not meeting our timeliness in terms of presenting this to the state, and therefore, we lose our ability to have any control over what our zones look like and how housing is implemented in the city, to me is, like, a terrifying prospect, right? Like, I, I don't want to see that. But I also want to make sure we get it right, so we're in the best possible position to be prepared, given the fact that it's, it's not, it's not a, like, an if situation, it's a when situation for us. I'm willing, I'm willing to move the item, I think, with, with the additional recommendation. Again, like I said, I can, I can make all the findings. I, I do think that they are met and satisfactory to the state law. I, I also want to say, like, I don't think, if we tell the city council, hey, think about this, that they're not also thinking about this, too, as well. Like, they also all lived through it, and they were actually here in city hall during Kenneth and, and, and all the fires. So I don't know if there's, like, a, like, an amendment you'd be comfortable with putting together or refining the motion in a way where we, we get the package through, but also give at least our sense of, you know, we think that there could be maybe one more shot at getting an analysis that really can capture more scenarios, so that staff and residents can feel like we're in the best possible position? Because to me, that, like, ultimately, as I made comment earlier, like, if 50% of the city is already aware, and like, we're just increasing that, like, that, that's what I care about. Like, I want to make sure that we're in a position where, you know, we all chose to live here for a reason. And one of those reasons is because the natural environment around us is beautiful, but that also presents risk. And, you know, so we do live here, it is our community. I want to make sure that I can get out with my children, but also everyone, no matter where they are, can get out. You know, but the fact of the matter is, like, our city's built out. Like, we're not building more roads. We're not doing those types of things. So I just want to make sure, like, we don't kibosh this tonight, and then, like, on top of all of that, then, like, lose our ability to, like, enforce our, our housing stuff. So anyways, I'm a little torn. Like I said, I'm, I'm comfortable moving it as it's currently written. I'm also comfortable, because I want to make sure that you're comfortable because I want to make sure that your thoughts are captured, especially you as well, Commissioner Platzer. So, if there's an amendment that you'd be willing to...
Is there, yeah, thank you. Is there a way we can move the recommendation forward, but then request that regardless of what the council does, that we run another scenario? And we can always bring this back to us after it's, like, can we update that evacuation analysis as the city pleases? Can we budget for it for next year and, like, take the notes that we've taken today, or given, into account?
Yes. You can recommend to the city council, the city council will know that you guys struggled with the, what the worst-case scenario really means. They'll know that because every one of our council members watches this meeting before they go. I think they all watch them. And the, my responsibility is to make sure that they're informed of your recommendations. So, we will, believe me, I will indicate, and you'll see the packet when it gets released. If it's inaccurate, you can say something. But generally speaking, we're very good about passing along exactly what your feedback was to them, so that they can take, they can take that into consideration. It is entirely possible for the council to say, "We want to check in on the evacuation analysis, and we're at budget now. Next year, we want to budget enough to be able to run another scenario." Or they could say, "Run another scenario before we make our decision." They have all of their options available. Your recommendation is a recommendation. They're the final approval authority, and if they don't feel comfortable that the scenarios are addressing everything, or if they can, if they do feel comfortable, it really will be how they feel about it at the end. But what we will do is forward your request, or if your recommendation is that you recommend that this is approved, that you recommend that this is approved based on the staff recommendation, with an amendment that says the city council will consider running another scenario that involves what you're looking for. So, you got to tell us. So, I want it to be in the middle of the day, when everybody is at home, or everyone is wherever they are, and whoever the city is being used, is being used. I want them to run a scenario with more cars, whatever it is, be explicit, so that they don't pay to run another scenario that we're like, "Well, you didn't really look at the wind coming from the east." And they have to do it again, because these scenarios, they, the scenarios that we're running at this point, they wouldn't be required of us for state requirement. They're being required to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. And if the council wants to devote resources so that, so that we run it, I want it to matter. So, if that is your recommendation, I need you to be explicit about what types of scenarios you would like the council to direct us to run.
I'm good with that. Are you okay with that? Are you guys okay with that? I would be okay running, approving this recommendation with an amendment to budget another evacuation analysis on a midday, like, midday during a school day, and with the consult of some sort of fire professional. Like, there are tons of, I feel like people that, that have a career in something tend to sometimes become consultants of that once they retire. So, I would hope that if that is available, we would use, we would use some sort of fire professional consultant to, because I get, in one world, I feel like it's, we're, we're just making this evacuation analysis to satisfy a state requirement, but it's a real-life thing that we need to, like, take into consideration, considering where we live. So, those three things are really important to me. And I'll reiterate, just because I went on a little tangent, but midday, with businesses open and schools in session, and with a consultant that has fire experience of, you know, that, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I'll jump in real fast. Two of the three, I tentatively agree with. The third, on the consultant issue, I think that, I mean, the analysis to run would be to a degree what has already been run, right? Like, I think, we don't need someone with fire experience to say that, like, the entire city can get a mandatory, like, get out right now, right? Like, that's, you know, to me, and if we're concerned about being, you know, prudent with our money, like, I think that, to me, is like a little bit unnecessary, just given the fact that, like, it's zero sum. It's like the whole city leading, right? Where I care a little bit more about is, like, Old Agora, I mean, Commissioner Platzer mentioned, like, having livestock, right? Like, we do, we saw images of a fire in Moore Park, I'm forgetting its name, where people were, like, running horses down their street, and people were going back. So, I'm concerned about, like, multiple trips back into the city for things like livestock. I'm worried about particularly in a day setting, when schools are at capacity. I happen to look up the numbers right now. Oak Park has 4,500 students. If 2,000 of those students are district of choice, that means families have to get in to get their students out. That's a particular concern to me, and that's not in consideration of the fact that LVUSD also has district of choice children too, who attend Agora High School, attend Linderow, and attend the elementary schools in the city. Though, to me, like, again, if we're going to move this, and we're going to move this with a recommendation that there be an additional analysis, I do think we should have a daytime analysis, no matter what, that accommodates those facts, because maybe less so, like, the trips back and forth, getting livestock, but particularly the children, because that, to me, like, as a parent, is the thing that I care, if things hit the fan, like, the first thing in my mind. Like, when we feel those earthquakes, I call my daughter's school immediately, like, "Yo, what's going on? Like, is everyone okay?" Right? Like, that's where my mind goes. And I couldn't imagine being, like, a parent out in Tarzana, navigating, like, wildfires, trying to get into Agora Hills to get your kid, and, or to Oak Park, rather, you know, but they have to come through our city to get there. So, that, to me, is something that I think at a, like, at a minimum, we need to analyze and have a better analysis on, because, you know, Palisades broke out at 10 o'clock in the morning. That was the, I have family, a very close friend, my wife's childhood best friend, like, had to go down downhill to get her son, drive back up the hill, grab whatever they could get out, and their home, you know, got burned down, right? So, like, it was a very real experience that they lived, and I'm just worried, like, again, not a matter of if, it's when. So, for me, I would be comfortable moving it with your first two points, and then with a particular emphasis on making sure that the analysis runs models that include our schools, our schools that would be utilizing our school, our streets during those hours, because I just, I fundamentally don't think that a 5:00 AM scenario really accounts for what a worst-case situation would be for our city. And I'm pretty comfortable to think that probably city council would probably agree with that, given how fires have erupted and with what frequency they erupt.
Right. And I can, I can align with that, and I know that we didn't say it today, but I do also want to say that LVUSD is also, has a lot of out-of-district students. So, I just want to make that clear, that we would have the same scenario for, you know, Willow's, Sumac, Manzanita, all those schools on Canaan. So, but I can align with that. Would that be sufficient to move it forward and request that the council consider allotting budgetary funds to run a real, not a real, another analysis next year in the budget, and with those considerations that Morgan just mentioned? Yes. You could make that recommendation, and if it passes with three of you, if it passes with three of you, that's the recommendation that they'll receive, because the recommendation from this action is your recommendation. So, whatever you put, whatever you agree to, the resolution will be, will reflect that, and it will go to, the draft recommendation will go forward to the city council with that in it. Just so you're aware, it's not, the children in the schools have a plan. All of the ISDs have a plan. All of the school districts have a plan. And I don't think, I can't speak to their plan, because I've never seen it, because their plan is somewhat confidential. But my understand, I don't believe that the plan requires all those parents to come to this location. I believe the plan requires those children to be loaded on buses, taken to a place of safety, and the parents go to that location and pick their children up. So, they wouldn't be coming through flames to pick their children up from the school. But I am not the staff person most knowledgeable about the school district's plans, because it is confidential. But I can speak to the person on our staff who is, that would be the city manager. He's aware, he has visibility on some of that. And for the city council, we can, we can share with them how the school districts manage their, manage their children. But that will not stop the council, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that the council will not still order the evacuation analysis to be run with the school districts in mind. So, I just wanted to put your mind at ease. The out-of-district parents don't have, I don't believe they have to go through fire to get their kids. I believe the kids are taken out on buses.
Totally. And I fully understand that, I appreciate it. I think that having that memorialized in an analysis to some degree, or even any, again, any memorialization of that, I think is some of the, I mean, even though they're not our constituent, like, they're not our residents, like, they have to come through our city. Those buses have to come through our city, right? Like, and would hypothetically, like, you know, we've all been through Oak Park, there's not, like, 30 school buses just sitting, waiting for the fire to happen to get those kids out, right? Like, they have to come into the city too. So, like, you know, a bus looks a lot different than a bunch of, you know, single cars, right? Like, one bus length is greater than two cars, right? So, without that analysis, you know, I agree with Commissioner Sharon, like, I think we should make that recommendation to city council while knowing that they might not adopt it at all. I defer to them with having, you know, them having a greater insight to the city budget. Nate will be present at that meeting, and he'll have a greater insight to the ISD plans and whatnot. I do think it's, like, I agree with you, like, I think it's very important that we make it very well-known to the city council, how we feel about the analysis, and having an additional analysis to really cover a more comprehensive evacuation plan and scenarios. But...
And what about businesses in operation and people?
Well, I mean, presumably, if we run it during the middle of the day, some of that would be accounted for.
And then, yeah, and then, like, transit, like, people who take public transportation on transit. But, so, those are, yeah, those would be, like, I can align with that.
Yeah, Commissioner Stein?
I have, just clear, I just want to understand. So, if we adopt this, we're going to make a recommendation to city council that within a year, come up with a budget to be able to do a more detailed analysis on what we consider to be, okay, let's look at it after, and I agree, I think that that is something maybe we could be looking at. What happens, though, if the analysis comes back and our roads completely fail? We're at, what is it, 1.5, and it's supposed to be 1:1? What does the city do then, when it knows it can't meet evacuation because we, you know, have this plan now? How do we deal with it afterwards? That's, that's only, I mean, it's something we should know, but what do we do if it comes out and says we don't have adequate routes, and we cannot safely move everybody if it happens at 12:30 and everybody's in class, everybody's coming in, everybody's going out? I mean, it just gets to the point where, you know, over-analysis, and then I get, I get paralysis, you know?
The scenario that we run, I would, I trust the traffic professionals. We've had Kim Lee Horn as our traffic engineer for 10, 15 years, and they are, they have proven to be very good at what they do and very accurate. If, I would be surprised if the middle-of-the-day scenario, because some people won't be here. Yes, there will be people who work from home, but some people won't be here. So, I would be surprised if you're going to, in the one scenario, you're at 21,000 and some with a capacity of 66,000. I would be surprised if having the schools and all the people in the city and the people on the buses who don't have cars generates 40,000 additional trips and triggers some sort of capacity failure in the network. However, I would be eager to see it too, because if that is an issue, then we do need to address it. No, we don't have more lanes. No, we don't have more freeway access points. So, what would end up happening at that point, which is what will happen if you activate this plan now, is in the event of an emergency, if we've got too many people on one road, we will divert them to another road, or we will use counterflow. So, we would do that regardless of what some other scenario says. But I do not see any harm in the council considering running another scenario in, like, a year, and we can, more information couldn't hurt. So, that's my, that's what I have for that.
And then, if they did run another scenario in a year, it would come back to the Planning Commission to make another recommendation, so it would come back to us?
Not necessarily, the, not necessarily. But what I would do is, if they did run another, we did run another scenario, I would bring an information item back to you to let you know what that new scenario, what that new scenario did, how it, how it worked. And I would make sure that you were aware of the results of it. I wouldn't keep it to myself, and you couldn't know. So, we'll either bring it to you, or we'll take it to the city council and give it to them, give the results to them, and we'll make sure that you're aware that, of what item that's going to be in. And if you wanted to attend that meeting to provide feedback, we could. It would really be up to how the city manager wanted to handle it.
Okay. So, I am, you know, really curious about a midday thing, where nannies and house workers and gardeners and everything is coming into the city, just like, you know, employed professionals are leaving the city. So, I would like to make a motion to, do I say, approve the staff recommendation with the amendment of a second analysis be considered by the, by, do you want to co-sign this?
Yeah, if I may. I think it would be, it would be helpful to us, because we want to move this item tonight. If we, we get some clarity on what amendments you'd like to see to the resolution, so if we could itemize, it sounds like there might be a couple, itemize what specifically you want added, and we would say in the resolution, you recommend, you recommend approval of this item, and you ask that the city council consider the following, and then we can include what those items are. And I think if we can get kind of consensus on what those items are right now, we can go back, take a 10, 15-minute recess, get the document ready for your review, and then we'll sign off on it tonight, and it'll be on its way to council.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. The only other thing too, and it was raised, I raised it earlier, and really not to throw a wrench in this, I apologize, but, on the communications plan. I know that is not part of this, but one thing that I would like to just make sure, like, council is aware of, you know, to any extent that we, you know, we can, we can resource or allocate, or really just, in all of our traditional communications that we currently, you know, are executing through the city's communications plan, you know, after this gets adopted, making sure that there's just more inclusion of, of the updated analysis. Right? I think it's, like, very timely. I think we all saw what happened, the images of the news. We all, everyone in this room knows someone who was impacted by both fires. So, I think we all care a lot, and I think right now is the best time to capture, before we all kind of get, you know, I don't want to say complacent, but we kind of forget, right? And we take some time, and then it happens again, right? So, to any extent that the communication, a communication plug could be included in the amendment, I'm fine without, but I, that's really important to me, because...
Could we make it a second, a separate amendment, just to separate the two things?
Well, I think per Travis's recommendation, would be like kind of a laundry list of things to include. So, I think one of which would be a daytime analysis that is encompassing of, you know, occupied businesses, schools within the region, and the evacuation routes at capacity. Is there a third?
Yeah, I don't know how to articulate this, but like, like, gardeners, house cleaners, nannies, like, like, the labor force that comes in, that's not necessarily a business, that not coming to a business. I don't know how to articulate that.
You can make that motion. I don't know that that's knowable information.
Yeah.
Like, I have, I have no idea how our, um, how our transportation engineers would model nannies and gardeners on individual pieces of property. Um, I'm certain that they have the ability to somehow model based on traffic counts that we've done historically, when it's the middle of the day, how many trips are going through individual intersections. That I believe that they could do, but if you want them to start teasing into the, the personnel on these pieces of property, I think that would be challenging for them to be able to comply with.
I agree. I just, I, yeah, you answered that perfectly. Thank you.
Another thing too, I don't want to be missed within the school conversation as well, it's like often, Oak Park has 4,500 students, LVUSD has 10,000 students, but the personnel and the staff, I do think is an important metric, right? As we know, many of those folks who are working our school districts don't live in our city, um, because of our housing costs, so, right? I, I do think that's another factor. I know those are some of the largest employers in the region, so, um, I think those are two, I, I don't know how to include a communications plug, but again, I, I do think it's probably going to be something that's discussed at the city council, so I'm less worried about that one.
You can ask for, I would ask for it. If it's something that you want them to consider, go ahead and ask.
Now, would it be considered then, so, would it be considered with the adopted evacuation plan? Would that be where they would plug in versus the analysis? To me, those seem like two...
There already is a communications component in the evacuation plan that's adopted that we use now and we executed it while, during, during Kenneth. Plus, the communications division in the city manager's office has an extremely robust outreach program. They make, uh, they have a very robust outreach program. So if you want, uh, the communications, put that in, in your motion and we will make sure that that gets passed on to, uh, passed on to council. And when we go before them, we'll prepare some suggestions for them to consider so that they can beef up the communications and try and reach, is, try and improve the communication program we already have. We can do that.
And I know it's a source of pride for the cities, I don't want to diminish what has already been done and so, I think it's, you know, since I've been a resident or come back as a resident, um, it's increased a lot, but I do think it's, it's, it's worth mentioning.
Sorry, just to follow up on, on the communications point, is, would that be part of the evacuation analysis or are we asking for that to be analyzed separately?
They, I, what I heard was, I don't think that Chair Roth, I don't know that you necessarily care which document it's in, you just want the, the communication strategy to be highlighted to the council so that they can put it where they feel is most appropriate. It could be amending the existing evacuation plan to add it, it could be placing that information in a different, a different document, but you want us to look at improving our outreach so that everybody understands what zone they're in, what route they're to take, how they're supposed to get out, if I understand...
Yeah, and I think that's right. I mean, I, I don't necessarily think it has to be in one or the other. I just, like, the scenario that I, right, like, I have, we have, like, I've never been communicated what the evacuation plan is for my children, you know, and so it sounds...
For your children?
Yeah, well, it, but that's part, I mean, that's part of the communications plan. It's like, it seems like there's a silo, right? Particularly with the schools, um, and I know some of the concerns were all the schools along Canaan, right? Like, an obvious silo, I think, has been identified tonight where, like, they have a confidential plan that we can't know about and I think that's, you know, it's great for the, you know, protection of children's privacy, but I also think, like, you know, we should, we should have some cross-communication to understand, like, what do they know and what are they going to do and what are we going to do and how are we going to communicate in that real time? And I know, like, Nate will be deployed and, and, and other resources get deployed to, but what I'm trying to get at is I think, like, again, let's, let's up, like, up level, let's, let's raise the total awareness of what the evacuation plans look like, because I think if we've seen what has happened, right, with Sunset as an example and others, like, people just got out of their car and ran. Um, and I think if we could avoid that, edu, pre-education in, in, in advance of that, I think is critical.
We will mention it and if it is possible, the council will consider it and include it.
Yeah.
I can't commit for what information the school districts are going to be willing to share. And I would imagine they, uh, my children, when they were in school and the Thomas Fire was occurring, because I live in Ventura County, I got alerts, "Come get your children." And they delivered the children away from the school. So I believe that all of the school districts have a communication plan. However, I hear you and we will ask, um, we'll raise awareness to the council and ask what can be done and if something can be done, um, our council will do it.
All right, I think, hearing no other comments then, I will make a quick motion to take a 10-minute recess. Is that satisfactory?
Sorry, just one question before we get into drafting. So it sounds like we have two, two addenda, or two amendments. The first is for analysis of a midday scenario covering, um, both businesses and schools and a second amendment for incorporation of a, or consideration of commu, communication strategies that take into effect, for example, coordination with school districts and neighboring jurisdictions. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I also just wanted to mention, since we're making a wish list here, Commissioner Plaizer mentioned livestock. Um, I have a question, Denise, maybe you know the answer. Do livestock have to be, like, do, do people have to inform the city on what livestock they have on their properties in Oldagora? Do we know a count essentially?
No.
Okay.
Um, you do, we do not know the total number of animals. We don't regulate it. We regulate it, but not to the degree where we would go to individual property owners in Oldagora and say, "How many chickens do you have?" We don't do that. However, um, we, when the Kenneth Fire was occurring and we had activated our EOC, there, we published, we sent out information about where to take your animals and they were asked to evacuate even when humans were asked to evacuate.
I guess Travis, on the communication front, um, or sorry, no, my, my apologies, on the, on the daytime front too, I would also, um, add, like, are the city's largest employers? That doesn't encompass, like, the school district particularly.
And Commissioner Sharon, were you asking us to add something in here about an evacuation plan for animals?
Only if we knew the number of it. Um, otherwise, I think what we have is what we have and there's nothing to, like, amend on that. If we had a number, we could possibly know more information about it, but we don't.
I just want to be real clear though, the amendment is going to be that city council will look at doing this within a year, we're going to give them a timeframe. Okay, so, hey, they either listen to us and then they will then plan for a new analysis once they can figure out what they're, and I think they're having their budgets right now, so it's a good time for them to then say, "Okay, well, that's earmark X amount of dollars, uh, for this." Okay.
So, so the amendment would be, I'm trying to figure out how we work the, the one-year timeline into this.
What I'm hearing is they want, um, maybe not this year, but within a year, to have an additional scenario analyzed.
I'm, I'm not fully sold on the year because like, and, and Bruce, if I may, Commissioner Stein, if I may, I, I, I feel like if they take in here, like, where we have issues, they might say, "This isn't satisfactory now, we want the analysis done today." So I, the timeline for me is less relevant, more so, I would rather than, I want them to know what we, we care most about. Um, and I think they'll probably come to their own conclusion as to what is the most relevant timeline to get the better, sorry, to get an additional analysis that they could work with. So I don't know, to me, I don't know if a year is necessary in including it to not.
Yeah, I, I think having it be considered for, in next year's budget is satisfactory, whether it happens in January or December, it's in the budget.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying though is like, let's, let's, let's let them make that determination, because they might say, "Let's do it today because we agree with the planning commission that these factors do warrant an additional analysis that will help us make a better informed evacuation plan, et cetera." So...
Okay.
The timing to me is less, I think it's pretty immaterial to the outcome.
And the council, um, whether they want to table our amendment or not, they can, like, pass whatever portion of the recommendation they want. Is that accurate? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Travis, do you want to hit us one more time with what you think the motion might be and then we'll take a recess?
Okay, so let me, let me just double check on the amendment. So it's a midday scenario covering, um, schools, well, also covering schools and large businesses, is that right? In addition to the residences, which are, which have already been analyzed. Um, and then, secondly, incorporating the communication strategy, um, that includes coordination with school districts and neighboring jurisdictions. Was there anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think that probably covers it. I, I would just say on that second one, it's less so, you know, I, it's more just a recommendation, I guess, than of staff to present it, um, but why do we, why do we take the recess? You can cobble up and then we can weigh after 10-minute recess. Does that sound good?
And I would believe that the city council members would probably, listening to this, would probably understand exactly our intent and what they should be doing too. So if it's completely unclear, they'll be able to identify the issues too.
Do I need to make a motion for a quick recess? Or, sorry, should one of the commissioners make a motion?
Yeah, that'd be great.
10, 10 minutes, you think?
Yeah, 10 minutes. Please.
Commissioner Sharon makes a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Stein, seconds.
Great, we'll take a 10-minute recess. It is now 9:25, we'll return at 9:35. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a matter of process, Travis, do we have to make a motion to reconvene to the meeting?
I think you just called it back to order.
Okay, great. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I don't know if I gavelled, but I'll do a light gavel. Great, all right, well, before we closed and took our recess, we were deliberating, and I believe that staff has presented and put together an updated and amended recommendation for tonight. How should we proceed?
Sure, so I can give a quick recap. We took the kind of comments that you provided earlier. We drafted an amendment to, I believe this is section, was this 12, of the draft resolution that was presented to you in your packet. So at this point, we'd like your input on whether or not this language matches kind of what we were discussing. If so, then we can entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Great, and for the purposes of, I know the public that was here has since left, but I will read it out loud. So in addition to the original recommendation from city staff to us, we would also recommend to city council that they consider the following. One, incorporate an emergency scenario involving the evacuation of residences, large businesses, and schools at midday on a non-holiday weekend. And two, to address public safety communication strategies that include cooperation between the city, school districts, and neighboring jurisdictions. I'm of the opinion, I think that captures pretty much the conversation that we had, and I think is satisfactory, in my opinion, to move it forward to the council. Is there any other feedback before we proceed to a motion?
None?
Sorry, just a point of clarification, it's a non-holiday weekday. And then I also noticed a typo that, it's my bad. So it's a strategies that include cooperation.
Okay. I think minor details that can get corrected after the fact.
Should do, I want to make sure that this clarifies schools in Agora and Oak Park, since we do need to account for their evacuation. Is that correct? Is that clear in this?
So you want to add Oak Park and La Speranza?
Just in item one, after large businesses and schools, so like.
Yeah, La Speranza and Oak Park.
La Speranza and Oak Park schools within Agora and Oak Park.
I will say, if you do list particular jurisdictions, it could, I mean, I don't know how council's going to interpret it, but it couldn't be sort of exclusive, right? Like only these two, whereas if we just said schools, then it's broad.
That's my gut read of it, too, is I'd rather be ambiguous and use just schools and have the going assumption that our city council understands that would include anyone who travels through our city, which would include Oak Park unified.
I can align with that. Thank you.
Any other feedback? Commissioner Platzer?
I still would like community input, because I think that's important. And I appreciate that we have like a noose around our neck regarding the state, and we're going to lose all our jurisdiction. But it still bothers me that the community is still not involved, except for a few that were here.
I feel like the community showed up. I don't know, do you have more, an elaborate, like, can you expand on that?
Well, like a public hearing. I think, I think, if I wasn't on the planning commission, I would never know that this was happening.
If I may, I understand where you're coming from. In my opinion, I do think the second amendment here acknowledges that to our city council to suggest that, right, I think this is all encompassing of all forms of communication that go into this. In my opinion, I, you know, I think we did receive public comment tonight. Largely, the public comment, comments that we received, I think, are reflected with these additional amendments. With this being on the record, with it coming back to city council presumably by the end of the month, I do think there's a lot of opportunity for the public to provide input. And I know the stakeholders that were here tonight will certainly be probably present and involved, and probably more so, because it's usually typical of our city council meetings. I'm, again, I'm comfortable to meet, or sorry, to move this as it's currently written. I think it satisfies what your concerns are, and I think it satisfies the conversation that we had earlier. If there is a maker of a motion to move this as currently written, you can simply state so moved, and then we can proceed from there.
Okay, so Commissioner Sharon, so moves. Can I just say that? Thank you.
Let's say you move the staff recommendation, including the amendments, on the screen. Just for clarity.
Okay. Commissioner Sharon moves to approve the recommendation presented to us tonight with the addition of the amendment on the screen.
Commissioner Stein, seconds.
Great. I guess I just defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Platzer?
Well, I am still hesitant, but I guess I will go along with it and say yes with reservation.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, if I may, Commissioner Platzer, you're not obligated to vote yes, so you are free to vote no. It's your choice. I just want to make sure that that's clear. So maybe we should do the roll call one more time, just for clarity.
Great, I'll defer to our city clerk for one more additional roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Can I abstain? I'll abstain.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval three, two, one with Commissioner Platzer abstaining.
Great, thank you very much. And I will defer to our community development director. Sorry, I usually do. I don't know if there's any deference there.
I appreciate the deference. In this particular instance, because this isn't a land use decision, it's going, it's on referral. An appeal to your recommendation can be filed, but it's, you aren't the final approval authority.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, Chair Roth, planning commissioners. This evening, we are going to bring to you a project that has been years in the making. This is the next step in the development of our trails network. We began years ago, as I'm sure you're all aware, and we constructed a trailhead at the event center. And Robbie Nastovic, our senior planner, is going to present the item to you to build the first component of the trail. With that, I defer to Robbie. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So as Denise said, we're gonna be discussing a proposed city trail tonight. It is located south and west of Agora Hills Recreation and Event Center, and the case number is CUP-2024-0032. So tonight, I'll be giving you a quick project background, gonna be going over the project description, explaining the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, going over staff's analysis, gonna be going over one public comment that we received, followed by staff's recommendation. So the Agora Hills Citywide Trails and Pathways Master Plan was adopted in 2008, and it aimed to provide bicycle, equestrian, and hiking systems that provide connectivity specifically for pedestrians. And it proposes a future trail which would traverse the length of Lady Face Mountain. So on this slide, you'll see that proposed trail in yellow, and you can see it traverses Lady Face Mountain. And the goal was to provide several connections to Agora Road. And just to reiterate, this is a future proposed trail that's identified in the master plan of 2008. It hasn't been built yet. So we had some previous project iterations. The first trail study was done in 2015 for this particular project. It documented environmental conditions and included a different proposed trail alignment. Subsequent field studies that we did in 2016 and 2018 provided additional environmental data and modified the trail alignment specifically to minimize construction impacts. We modified it to be a two-foot trail and to reduce the need for retaining walls and grading. Finally, the trail was realigned a third and final time in 2024 due to access issues with an adjacent property owner. So that gets us to the project description, which is to construct a city trail south and west of the event center. The Phase One construction would include the development of a 0.45-mile loop trail. That construction's anticipated to happen sometime in July if this project gets approved. And then Phase Two would include a 0.14-mile overlook trail attached to the Phase One loop and a separate 0.23-mile overlook trail. And Phase Two, we don't have a specific date for yet, but may occur at a later date if or when funding is available. So just what I described is on the screen with the site plan, so you can see the proposed Phase One trail in red and the Phase Two trails in blue. The blue proposed Phase Two would potentially provide connectivity to that future trail network that we discussed earlier. So for the trailhead, it was originally constructed in 2014, like Denise was saying earlier, and it was constructed concurrently with the Agora Hills Recreation and Event Center parking lot. No improvements are required for the trailhead other than required signage. And so that brings us to the construction scope, which is simply a two-foot wide trail. And we're meaning to follow the natural contours as much as possible to avoid impacts. We're not using any impermeable surfaces or retaining walls, and we're using hand tools only, so no heavy equipment. So this is a standard cross-section for the trail. You can see the existing ground surface and the proposed trail surface that has a 2% max slope. That's for water runoff. You can see that it's approximately two feet wide. So for the required signage and the operational requirements that's gonna be posted on the signs, the trail's gonna be operational from sunrise to sunset. It'll be only for hiking, so no biking or other uses are allowed. We'll have standard operational requirements, such as dogs have to be on leashes, no littering, no smoking, and it's gonna be closed during and after rain events. And we'll also have safety and penalty information available on there as well. So for the environmental document, I think all of you are a little bit new to environmental documents, so I'm just gonna take a moment really fast to kind of explain the initial study and mitigated negative declaration process. So when a project isn't subject to an exemption under SEQA, you have to do what's called an initial study. And what happens in an initial study, it is basically a large staff report where you look at all of the different environmental impact areas that you're required to look at under the California Environmental Quality Act, specifically SEQA Appendix G. So once you analyze all the environmental impact areas, you basically determine whether or not each impact area would have a significant, a possibility to have a significant impact. And so we identified as part of this project three impact areas that could potentially be significant if we didn't incorporate mitigation. And those particular resource areas are cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and biological resources. So, that being said, we've incorporated several mitigation measures to ensure that impacts to those resource areas are less than significant. So you'll see in the environmental document, we have biological mitigation measures Bio 1 through Bio 7. And just in a nutshell, we have to do biological monitoring throughout construction and before construction to ensure that we're not impacting nesting birds or sensitive or endangered species. And if there is no way to avoid them, we have to mitigate for them or provide replacements. But I can say that we are going to try to avoid by all means possible. For cultural resources, it's the same deal. We will have a tribal cultural monitor on site during construction, and that is the majority of the mitigation measures. And you can see it as Culture 1A through Culture 4 in the environmental document. It's worth noting that some of the cultural resource mitigation measures are not public, so that's why it appears that some of them are missing. The initial study and mitigated negative declaration was noticed and circulated for a 30-day public review period on March 3, 2025. That notice was published in the Acorn, the LA County Clerk, and via SEQA submit at the California Office of Planning and Research. Mailers were also sent to property owners within 750 feet. We did receive one comment letter from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They outlined a few items, and we responded to all their comments. And you can actually see that the final initial study and mitigated negative declaration is in legislative format. That's because we addressed all of their comments, and they had no further comments, and they were satisfied with all of our responses. So as part of the staff analysis, we had to review the project against some of the requirements that are on the screen. And we did find that it complies with the standards and objectives of the Lady Face Mountain Specific Plan and the General Plan. So the Lady Face Mountain Specific Plan and General Plan both encourage trails and pedestrian connectivity. The project scope and construction methods were consciously chosen to have as little impact as possible on the environment, including limiting grading impacts and impacts on wildlife. And since it's a relatively short trail, we anticipate it to be used mostly by the local community and surrounding land uses. So parking and trip generation would be relatively insignificant and would be able to be accommodated by the existing facilities at the recreation center. And you can see the full list of findings in the resolutions attached to your staff report. For the noticing for this public hearing, it was published in the Acorn on April 18, 2025. That notice was also published at three places, including the library, City Hall, and the rec center. Signage was actually installed along Lady Face Court for the property, and we also sent the same mailers to property owners within 750 feet, once again. We did receive one public comment on April 22, 2025, and it was regarding parking near the roundabout on Lady Face Court. We included that in the staff report, but staff believes that the proposed project isn't going to impact that section of roadway. We think that the project can easily be contained on all the parking spaces adjacent to the trailhead. But that being said, we are still going to work with the person who made that public comment to address their concerns about the roadway up there. So we just think that's separate and doesn't really have an impact on the project or our findings. So with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt two resolutions. The first is approving CUP-2024-0032, subject to the conditions of approval. And two, adopting the project final initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program and directing staff to file a notice of determination. And so with that, I am available with any, for any questions.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Do any commissioners have questions of staff tonight? Commissioner Stein?
Commissioner Stein has just a couple of questions. I'm just curious, I just wanted to confirm, is this funding from outside the city? And two, will this funding also provide for standard maintenance of the trails? And, you know, checking erosion periodically? I'm just more concerned just from a safety perspective that we have addressed that. I wasn't real clear in some of the reading on that. And then just for myself, I'm not a hiker, so I have no idea if that's wide. I mean, I, you know, 1,000 feet up, and I'm walking along that. Just want to make sure that, I would assume it's sufficient. But, you know, those are, you know, some of my just, you know, concerns is ongoing costs of maintaining these things?
Yes, so the two-foot trail is standard. We did receive grant funding. I can defer to Louis with any specific questions about the grant funding and the future costs associated with that. But I can say that our Parks and Recreation Event Center staff would be monitoring the trail as well for all the operational requirements, and I'll defer to Louis for the rest.
Thank you, Robbie. Commissioner Roth, members of the commission, yes, there will be, there is grant funding, and that is what is paid for a portion of the trail. There will also be some additional general funds that have been gonna be allocated to the project to finish it. With respects to maintenance, that will just become part of the city's ongoing maintenance budget. So when we're budgeting for parks or maintenance, that's gonna be something that will be included in future budgets because we are, we will be the owner of the trail and the responsible for maintenance and things like that that happen.
Thank you.
Great, any further questions from staff? I mean, my fellow commissioners, yeah, Commissioner Platzer?
Yes. Is two feet wide the standard of a trail? I do hike. Two feet seems like only one person can go through and has to back up.
I'm gonna defer to Charmaine, who's our pedagogy director.
Good evening. A two-foot trail is a single-track trail. And that is something that, and Louis Helaya can also chime in, that this was something in agreement with the MRCA, who owns the land, and we have an easement on them, and they required that we keep it to a single-track trail.
Yes, and I will confirm, that was a requirement of the MRCA for this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharon?
Thank you for the presentation. So in the staff report, it mentioned the loops being, you know, well, the trails being short and ideal for lunch hour, you know, recreation. Do we have any intention of putting like a trash can or anything like that at the top so that if people are taking a lunch hour at the viewpoint or whatever, wherever they choose, that there's sufficient, you know, trash for them?
Yes.
Who would maintain that?
Yes, so the MND actually does consider that, and we've also considered putting like doggy bags up there as well. So like little facilities that have the doggy bags and little trash can.
Okay, great. And would that be, and then you mentioned that event center staff would be maintaining. Are they the team that would, the janitorial staff at the event center, would they be maintaining the trash cans? Or would that be part of our parks maintenance?
The Parks and Recreation staff, that would be something that they would probably task to the janitorial people as part of their scope, to go over the trailhead and make sure that the trash can is empty.
Okay.
It's either gonna be handled by staff, or primarily, I would assume it's gonna be allocated and given the responsibility to the janitorial folks who clean the rec center.
Okay, thank you.
Great, I have just a few questions. Can you pull up the map real quick of the two trails? Great, is there any consideration for connecting them? And the reason why I ask is because I foresee people just trudging through to make their own bigger loop. Is there any consideration for that?
Yes, so this path was carefully chosen due to a number of environmental and cultural sensitivities. So that would be the reason why that the trail path is what it is.
So there will be no future third phase that would connect the two trails?
No, so basically, when we go out there for our pre-construction surveys, we're going to be doing the final trail alignment. It's gonna be as close as possible to this, but it's going to be aligned based on environmental sensitivities in the contours of the land so we can have as little disturbances as possible, and I'll leave it at that.
If I may add on to that, the alignment as selected was selected so that any significant impact could be regulated, could be mitigated to a less than significant impact. And the, to go in and disturb the areas that have not been disturbed would cause a significant unavoidable impact that you wouldn't be able to do. So this is the alignment that we can get through the process.
Appreciate it. My second question, just because Robbie, you had mentioned like mitigation for some of the biology and nesting birds, I think, is such an example, but would there be anything that would be found kind of in either Phase One or Phase Two of the construction that would like render, like stopping the project from that point on?
I mean, yes and no. So there's things that may render the project infeasible, such if we found an endangered species, it might require an incidental take permit. But that's the purpose of the pre-construction surveys, is to make sure you're not impacting those species. And so we have specific mitigation incorporated for all the endangered species that we presume may be on site. One specific one that comes to mind is the crotch bumblebee. We're doing surveys for that, actually, right now.
Thank you. Any further questions from my fellow commissioners? Great, hearing none. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose?
Commissioner Stein spoke with staff?
No.
No.
Neither do I. Great, the public hearing is open. I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the Planning Commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. City clerk, do we have any public comments for tonight?
No written. Public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Great. Moving on then, before we close tonight's public hearing on the item, do any commissioners have any further questions of staff? Great, hearing none. I will now close the public hearing. We'll now move on to deliberations. Would each commissioner also state whether or not they can make the findings on tonight's item? I'll defer to my right, and let's go with Commissioner Sharon to start.
I am happy to see this progressing, and I can make all the findings.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Platzer, Commissioner Stein?
I'm happy to see it. I think the more trails, the better, and I can go along with the findings.
Commissioner Stein can make all the findings.
As can I, and yeah, I just want to add that I am glad to see this move forward. And I think it will be a great addition to our event center to have a little trail for folks to be able to utilize, staff during their breaks, and I just did a run the other day, and like came right through City Hall. And like, to be able to do a little trail run as part of that run would be great, and so I'm very excited for it as well. I can also make all the findings. Great, so the staff recommendation tonight is to recommend the Planning Commission adopt two resolutions. One to approve CUP-2024-0032, and two to adopt the project final initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program. I will now call for a motion in a second to approve tonight's staff recommendation.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the two resolutions to approve- to approve the conditional use permit and adopt the project final initial study.
Great. Is there a second?
Commissioner Sharon seconds.
Thank you very much. I'll defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Plaizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Thank you very much. And now I will defer to our Community Development Director Denise Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Roth. The decision of the Planning Commission is final unless it's appealed within 15 days of the approval date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. We have one last item tonight, which is to discuss amending the Agora Hills Municipal Code to change the Planning Commission's start time from 6:30 to 6:00 p.m. I will now defer to the Community Development Director Denise Thomas for the staff presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Roth, planning commissioners. So this is a discussion item, and essentially, what I am seeking is your feedback on changing the Planning Commission's start time from 6:30 to 6:00 p.m. On nights where we have a heavy agenda and where we have a lot of land use cases for you to consider, having that extra half hour could really make a difference so that the meetings don't go so long. I've taken a look at the participation here and the participation at City Council, aligning our start time with the City Council's start times. I don't believe it will be an impediment to public participation. We generally start late, and we don't have a whole lot of public participation in the audience. And they have a lot of public participation at the City Council level. So 6 o'clock seems to be a time when residents can come out and still participate for those reasons. I want to ask the City Council to consider amending Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances to allow or to reflect that the City, the Planning Commission's start time would be 6:00 p.m. If they recommend approval, when we come back from the hiatus in July, your new start time would be 6:00 p.m. in August. So I was just looking to kind of hear if there's anyone that is opposed to starting at 6, as opposed to 6:30. And if so, I'd like to know your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to any public comment that we may have received, do any commissioners have questions of staff? But I guess this would probably be our deliberation. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a discussion item, so you're not voting on it. I just want to hear kind of your thoughts and your feedback.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sharon?
Considering it's after 10, I have no problems.
It was almost like this item was picked for tonight's agenda, right, to make a point, Commissioner Stein?
I agree 100%. The only question I would have is if we know like the first item is longer, could we have maybe give people a chance to come and do easier things in the beginning and then run later? Or is it better to start with the heavier things and then move? I mean, I'm just trying to just figure it out if I was coming to it, but I have no problem starting at 6:00 p.m.
You are always welcome, as a commission, to confer and determine whether or not you want to reorganize the agenda. And then you take a motion to reorganize the agenda or move an item forward. And if you have a majority, then you're allowed to do it. The council does that depending on the amount of speakers they have. If they have an item that has a lot of speakers, sometimes they'll pull items forward. For us, if we have outside consultants that are on our clock, we want to try and get those items up and out so that we can, so that we, as a city, pace them for the work that they do and not for the work, the time they're sitting. So controlling your agenda is your choice, and it could be in any manner you wish. So you always have that ability, whether we change the start times or not.
Great. Commissioner Plaizer?
I have no problem. I think it's reasonable to start at 6, especially when it gets darker. It's probably an advantage.
Thank you. Yeah, I see no issue with it as well. I think it makes, you know, anything, I think, to increase our participation, I think, would be phenomenal. I know a lot of it has to do with the fact that so many prior issues that would have come before us no longer come to us. But I think tonight is a great example of where more participation would have been, you know, welcome, and hopefully, half an hour earlier start time achieves that. Great. I suppose we'll move to public comment before we move on. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, we are moving to public comment. So now I will defer to our city clerk.
No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards were submitted.
I suppose if this was done half an hour earlier, my brain would have been a little bit faster. Great. I will, so tonight, this last item is to respectfully recommend that the commission provide feedback regarding adjustment to the Planning Commission's start time from 6:30 to 6:00 p.m. I will now call for a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. And will you please state your name?
If I may, there is no need to vote. I just needed, it was a discussion item. So the next steps will be, I will prepare a staff report for the City Council asking to amend the municipal code to reflect the 6:00 p.m. start time for the Planning Commission. And I will include your feedback as Planning Commission discussion in the staff report so City Council knows that you did consider the start time and that you're okay with it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was following the notes here. Great. So I think that closes us out. Are there any comments from staff tonight? No, seeing none. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments to make? Hearing none. I just want to thank everyone for staying and being here. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, May 15, 2025, in the City Council chambers of the Civic Center located at 30001 Lady Face Court, Agora Hills, California. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.